This meeting is now live. The morning Warden Danielson, members of County Council. November twenty-third special meeting of Halliburton County Council is now in session. Warden Danielson presiding.
Morning, everyone. We've come a fair distance with this particular topic and there's been a lot of hard work done. Hopefully today we can, we can see things move just one more step forward. In trying to put this in place. I guess we will start first with a roll call and then we'll get into the business of the day.
Counselor Burton.
Present.
Counselor Royale.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Yep, here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Present.
Counselor Devolin.
Present.
Counselor Shell.
Present.
Counselor Moffett.
Present.
Warden Danielson.
Present.
Could I have a mover and a seconder for adoption of the agenda? Counselors Devolin and Burton, thank you.
It resolved that the agenda for the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty special meeting of Halliburton County Council be hereby approved.
All in favor? Carrie. Is there any disclosure pecuniary interest today? Hearing none, we, I'm sorry, did I see a hand up? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. So the item of business for today is the shoreline preservation bylaw. If we could have our planner, Charlesy White. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Warden and members of County Council. So this morning, you have before you a report with regards to the shoreline, draft shoreline preservation bylaw. And I'm seeking two, two things from County Council. First, requesting to move forward with public consultation and I provided some materials attached to this report, which we will, we will discuss. And then also as part of that public consultation to create a virtual public meeting. And we're looking at different options on how to do that as well. As a number of members of the public have said that they would like to have the opportunity to speak to County Council. So I've also provided in this report a quick outline of timelines. I have heard a number of times that if this bylaw were to move forward, that County Council would like to see that for spring of next year. And this shows the steps to do that and an approximate timeline to get us to that point. And then lastly, attached to the report, I have put together a summary of almost fifty questions that were from County Council, both at past council meetings as well as submissions that were made to me following our last meeting. And so I've organized them in association with each other. So where there's common interest, I've put those questions together rather than repeating the same question a number of times and then put an answer in place. So to you, Warden, would you like to go through each of the attachments or how would you like to proceed?
Um, I think unless I hear from other members of council that we'll need to go through the attachments. I, I would guess that to start with, we need to look at your proposed timeline and see what comments we might receive about that. I suppose it might depend on some of the questions that you might be asked today. What's everyone's thoughts on the, on the proposed timeline at this point? Counselor Moffett.
Uh, thank you. I actually, I have some concerns around the timeline and I understand the purpose. That generally there's a will to have something in place before the twenty-twenty-one season. My concern is how the comments or I'd like clarification, how, how comments would be reviewed or any changes made or council discussion held on the comments in time for the proposed delegation of authority in February by the lower tier. So perhaps we could have some clarification on that.
Sure. So I was proposing or thinking that if we did public consultation to end mid-January, that we could bring that together, have that then public meeting somewhere end of January and thinking committee of the whole timeline for February. And that would be the opportunity not only for the public to speak at a county council meeting, but also for any comments or recommendations from council based on that, as well as a summary that would be created for that public consultation from mid-December to January and have that all brought forward at one meeting. You're right, it may be a quick timeline. I, I agree with that.
Uh, Counselor Kennedy.
Yeah, I echo Counselor Moffett's concerns. We've got a lot on our plate, both the lower tier and the upper tier and with the Christmas and December basically being a half a month, let's not kid ourselves. That I think the timelines are a little tight. I, I would like to know what the, if Charlesy can give us an update on where she is with the creation of the fee and permit process. You've got that in February, March, which is after all the consultations and input. I would have thought that maybe that was a document that could have some draft material created as we go out to the public to give them some feedback and, and ideas on, on changes or potential impacts of any costs. Any update there?
So again, until there's a draft bylaw to the satisfaction of County Council, I, I can't really create a permit process for something. I don't know what we are or are not permitting. Most of the permit is standardized through the legislation of what is required to be in the permit. And in the draft bylaw, I have recommended that for the first year at least, the fee be zero dollars. Just to have, you know, that sort of trying to get buy-in from the public and to see how it actually, the process actually works for the first year. So once public consultation is complete, I am assuming there will be some changes to that bylaw, at which time the permit itself would be created based on whatever those criteria are outlined in the bylaw.
Counselor Royale.
The, the other thing too is possibly because I maybe couldn't find them. But I had difficulty locating schedules A through H. Because with those, you can now go to the bylaw and you can kind of look at where the schedule asks for or provides the information and then you can kind of correlate that back to the simplicity of how it would work or complexity of how it would work. Obviously, i- if they have been issued, I, I do not have access to them. And echoing the other two counselors, I would like to be able to do some preliminary walkthroughs, if not by myself, with other people who, who would be more knowledgeable and make sure that this process actually will work.
Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. So also a little concerned with the ambitious timelines, as has already been mentioned, to have enforcement starting in April. And one of my other concerns, it says staffing to start in April. And I'm not sure where, but further in our documents, it refers to hiring of two staff members. And we haven't gone into the budget process. So it says financial impact none. That's not true. There's going to be, I, I don't like, there's going to be quite a financial impact for hiring two new staff. So I guess at some point I wanted to have that conversation is how do we determine how many staff we, we need? Is it, is it a full-time job? Is it a two-person, two people full-time job? So I, I think we need to have a conversation over that as well.
Yeah, we've had some initial conversations about that, but it's true. We need to, we need to dig into the budget. Um, I, I think maybe acknowledging that it is an extremely tight timeline. Um, I, I'd like to see us at least try to move forward, see how we make out. And if the time needs to be extended, then, then so be it. Counselor Devlin and then Counselor Moffett.
Well, you've actually, Warden, hit on exactly what I was going to say. The chronology events and the process, I don't have a problem with. And my question was going to be to Charlesy, if at any part of this, i.e. like the type of virtual meeting, there's some hiccups or cause some delay. If this happens to get shoved forward a month or so from what these are, given the fact that there may be time constraints and processes that, that it will take longer weeks, does that create any problems?
So I anticipate that there will be delays. This is, as I said before, an ambitious timeline. And I was working to try to meet what I understood to be an expectation of a spring initiation. It is entirely up to County Council how we wish to proceed. And yes, coming out of public consultation, we may need to take more time. I, I understand that and I respect that because that is part of the process. So it could definitely be a longer time period.
Counselor Moffett and Counselor Shell.
Uh, thank you. I wanted to circle back again on, on the consultation process. We had quite a a comprehensive document provided to us in September that had outlined a number of key communication methods. And based on my notes from that day, I have checkmarks beside some things and X's through others. And I, I, I have to ask for a reminder of where exactly we landed on, what the methodology is going to be, what processes will be used for for the public input. Is it, is it just the meeting or, because we talked about making sure we had appropriate information processes and portals. So information all good, kind of goes into one place, but there were a number of options. So can I have a reminder of where we finally landed on that?
Sure. So my understanding from that, I guess that would be two meetings ago, was that there was a number of items provided in the draft consultation plan that County Council idea was that there was too much to try to squeeze into a process. And that my understanding was to take it to the public via our weighed in and have our website, the county website, have a shoreline page, which has been created, directing people there when the time comes for consultation, as well as working with the local municipalities to direct them to that from the local website to there as well. A social media campaign as well as having staff available to answer questions because we understand not everyone utilizes the online virtual consultation por- process. What I did hear was that County Council really wanted to have that public meeting. And the really only way to do it now is virtually. And so we, myself and Mr. Rutter have been looking at different ways other than Zoom to try to facilitate that. We, we haven't landed anywhere yet specifically. But we are definitely looking at it and it may end up being similar to this Zoom webinar, the way we do. As an example, our land division meetings where we can bring people in to present and then have them come back out of the meeting. So that is my understanding from that meeting.
Okay. So are there any more questions on the initial? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Shell, my apologies.
That's okay. Thank you, Warden. Um, so my only concern with council changing the schedule that staff has proposed is that this actually won't happen in the timely fashion that staff would like it to happen. So I guess as my perspective or my, my preference would be that we would leave the schedule as it is with Charlesy and any staff that's needed to understanding that we, you know, the, the timelines can be extended or changed, but I'm, I'm concerned if we pushed stuff ahead of or back of a month, I guess to be ahead of month, that we're, we're not going to have it in, in place in time. So personally, I think we need to, I, I would like to see the schedule left as it is with Charlesy having the opportunity to come back and say, you know, I, we didn't feel like we had enough collaboration with the public or you know, not enough information coming back from the budget for what we can get the two extra staff on and have her drive that, I guess, the schedule.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, okay, Counselor Moffett and then Counselor Royale.
With all due respect to everybody on the screen, I think policy is driven by council. So.
Counselor, point well taken. Counselor Royale.
I, my personal opinion is I, I really don't have any real comment one way or the other as to whether it should be moved forward, moved back, left alone. I think it, it needs to be done in a way that makes sense and that time will define itself as we progress forward. The trick is how do we make sure that we continue to progress forward? And like a lot of these processes that we're talking about, it's not that we need a final draft of the, of the bylaw to do that. The, the essence of what we're going to do is there. There are some wording changes and some minor issues that probably have to be dealt with, but the, the crux of protecting the shoreline and everything related to it is more or less defined as it is now with some adjustments. What we've been talking about in so far this morning is how to fund it, how to manage it, how to enforce it, all of those things. And to me, I don't see why we have to wait for, for a a final draft of the bylaw in order to do that. We should be able to ride a bicycle and chew bubble gum at the same time. It's my opinion. So I don't see why we can't work on both at the same time. And then maybe that deadline could be met.
Okay, so we're hearing concerns about the timing. I'll get to both Counselor Roberts and Burton in a second. I'm just hoping that we can move forward with the schedule as it's laid out, see how we make out and what sort of hoops we have to jump through or, or problems that, that we encounter. But start based on this schedule. Counselor Moffett. Counselor Roberts.
Yes, thank you, Warden. No, I, I just gonna agree with what you were just saying there. And what Counselor Shell had said is, is not that staff are driving it. This is something that council, County Council said we wanted a bylaw in place by the spring. So in order to, if you, that's your end goal, then this is the, this is the plan. Is it ambitious? Probably. And, and you know, it might not be that we have a bylaw in place till May thirtieth. I don't know. But I think if we, if we strive for this, we strive to set this a public Zoom meeting at the end of January, that's, that's doing what council said that we wanted to do, not necessarily what staff doing, staff representing this. So let's, let's try to stick to this. And if it, if it's not exact, that's okay, but we're going forward.
Thank you. Counselor Burton.
Thank you. I think most have said, but I, I would certainly support the, the timelines as they are. We can certainly change it. You know, get up to council to certainly do that. But I just wonder if we should put in there instead of timelines, if it shouldn't be maybe projected or no, there's nothing etched in stone with it.
Good point. Okay. So I think you're hearing that, that for the most part, we will strive to meet this timeline and and we'll all do our best. And if we run into roadblocks, it may slow things down a little bit. So can we move on to the council questions and, and Charlesy's responses? Charlesy?
Sure. So I put together, based on the past, I'm going to say the two meetings, so in September and October of this year, the questions that were presented when we spoke about different versions of the draft bylaw. Now I've also noted, because some of the questions are related to items that have been removed from that draft bylaw based on County Council direction. So I've just noted that in there as well. So maybe those concerns no, no longer apply as that portion of the bylaw may no longer be there. I'm happy to go through them or pick out ones maybe that require further clarification. There are fif- almost fifty of them. So going one by one may not be the best use of time, but I, I put it to you, Warden, how you wish to move forward.
Um, I, I would think, because it could, if we go through and read each one, one by one, that, that could be timely. But just sort of starting in, in order, I think let's, let's inquire, who has questions about about each response? Does there need to be further clarification? So let, let's try and run through. Does anybody have a que- a problem with number one? Hearing none, any questions on number two? Number three. Maybe I would just ask, what's the first question on, what's the first question that creates a problem rather than going through them each? But I would like to do them in order if we can. Counselor Moffett and then Counselor Roberts.
Uh, my first question is on number six. So I don't know if Amy is ahead of that or not. No, okay.
Okay.
And I, I'll just say right up front, I'm not going to apologize for the number of questions I have today. On number six, it talks about, you know, we have talked about the importance of having the one-stop shop. But the way this is, I guess, again, a little more clarification if I could have Charlesy. It seems like two layers of jurisdiction here and how, and, and further down in another question, it says that municipal bylaw is not going to be involved in monitoring or enforcing these. And so how can they be similarly a one-stop shop and yet not be connected? So just, just clarify the step one, step two, and how the communication between the two offices will happen.
Sure. So we at the county through this bylaw would not be involved in permitting of buildings, right? So that was always stay within the realm of the local municipality at the local building department. What we would be looking at in certain cases where the criteria are met is the site alteration outside of that building envelope. So later on, yes, there is a comment with regards to the separation from, once the, I guess, exterior walls and foundation of a building go up, how far out do we extend? So the idea would be, I know some of our local municipalities are looking at online resources for applying for building permits and moving those processes in that direction. And I think this would be a seamless transition where we could add the little checklist, which I'll just, I'll speak to later, right on that building permit page. So if somebody goes on, I'm just going to use DIZART as an example, to put in for a building permit application electronically. At the bottom, there would be that little piece for the shoreline preservation bylaw. Do I require to speak to the county as well? When it comes to enforcement, again, the building department would work under the building code and our staff would work under this bylaw. The processes could be exactly the same time. And in, I'm going, I'm hoping the majority of cases, there isn't going to be the requirement for large-scale permits from us. There may be. And it's usually going to be at the time of the building permit, where there's new development on a vacant site. And so it will be very important for the county and the building department to work together. But they are two separate spheres of jurisdiction, just trying to have the timelines move at the same time.
Okay, next question.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. It's, it's all the way up too. So let me just scroll up to number seventeen. So if somebody has a question before that, should I stop? Counselor Moffett, okay, I will stop. Mine is seventeen.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, if I, if I may, mine is number, uh, in number eight, again, it's maybe just a comment is that, uh, talks about, you know, what people can and can't do in terms of grass, a, a weed is what somebody, and I'm, I'm sure somebody thinks I'm trying to be funny and I'm not. A weed is what you don't want. And I, you know, encouraged and should are not enforceable. So how, in, in applying this to the whole greater scope of this, of the intent of this bylaw is how are, how do we long-term intend to engage the public in terms of encouragement and should and education? And it's very easy to say, well, you can go to this website or that link and get yourself educated on things. But what's the, what's the reality of of people being able to, to, or wanting to do that? And how much of it is subjective? And how much confusion is it going to create? The majority of my questions today are around clarification and efficiency for public engagement. So that, there's, just in number eight, it's, there's things there that we need to remember, that we need to continue to educate and encourage people to be involved to understand their land and landscape better. And how are we going to do that?
And I think it would be very similar to our current shoreline bylaw. That bylaw wasn't just put in place and people are just expected to know that it's there. As education and training for that bylaw right now, we have staff who attend Lake Association meetings, meetings with each of our local municipal public work staff as an example, to know what to look out for and provide that training on a recurrent basis. And I think moving forward, this would be the same. Yes, you can put things on a website, but it's actually going out to the public and making the time by staff to provide those educational materials and to keep them up to date. Because as I know from the existing bylaw, materials from the province and the status of certain things change every year, sometimes multiple times within a year. And so it's important to keep our staff up to date as well as the staff that we work with at the local municipalities and the public through a number of different avenues. There's also other associations. There's BIAs, there's, there's all kinds of opportunities for events where we can share that information.
I think one of the questions that will also come up about this is that there, there have been a number of suggestions that we encourage naturalization or, or build a, some kind of renaturalization piece into this. And I, we'll, we'll need to talk about that later, but I would, I would think that if we did do that, that it, it could and would include a lot of information that would help the public move forward. Does that answer your question, Counselor Moffett? Okay, next question. Counselor Kennedy and then Counselor Royale.
I have a, a question twelve. So somebody's before that, go ahead.
Anything before twelve?
Question nine.
Counselor Royale, then Counselor Burton and Counselor Moffett.
Question nine. People's perception of what affects their health is a whole lot different than aesthetics. And in the case of this, where we cited Goldenrod as a common accused of being cause for hay fever. And then you turn around and some people say it is, some people's not. So obviously those who don't believe it, it could be accused of being pulsifying. I, I think in this particular case, in somewhere else in the bylaw, it states that human nothing can be overset human health or health and safety to that effect. These kind of issues need to have some kind of, 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 of a way for the person who truly believes that their health is at risk to have it voiced. Because, you know, the statement that regardless of human preference, to me is, is, is fair. If you're looking at aesthetics, I have no problem with that. That makes, that makes perfect sense. But when it comes to what's person's perception of public health, that's a whole different kettle of fish.
Your response, Charlesy?
So public health always should be above any, I, I really don't know how to, to respond to that. I can only provide you the information that is available. The question was specific about Goldenrod, and so that's why I provided that. If moving forward, as was mentioned by the warden with a renaturalization, then education would include identification of different plants and species and what they may or may not interact with humans and, and create reactions as you're speaking to. And we all know, everybody has different reactions to different plants, different pollens, et cetera. So generalization when it comes to the natural and the, the species that would be used for the naturalization of a shoreline, but yes, public health and individual concerns would have to be considered.
Counselor Burton.
Actually, uh, question twelve was what I was going to comment on, but I'm fine with the answer. I do have another one, but it's down at nineteen. If somebody's ahead of that.
Uh, Counselor Moffett.
Indeed, thank you. Again, just for clarity for the average homeowner who, we, you know, whom, whom we are intending to educate. In number eleven, the question that somebody asked was about the language and I, I fully appreciate the, the answer. But if you're, on the one hand, you're not allowed to remove destroyer injured natural or native vegetation. But in number eight, we're allowed to pull things we don't like. So is that or that are considered undesirable? Is that, is that a, going to be, create confusion for the average person of what they can and can't do? It appears to be a semantics contradiction.
And I think that's very similar to a lot of municipal bylaws where the way that they're written and structured from a legal perspective is the beginning of the bylaw says what you're looking to control or have an impact on. And then it states specifically, as in this case, the no person shall. And the way bylaws, municipal bylaws work is you shall not unless you're allowed And the way bylaws, uh, municipal bylaws work is you shall not unless you're allowed to later. And so when you go later in the bylaw to the exemptions and permissions, that's where it says. You can do X, Y, and Z, and it outlines those specific things, similar to the current tree bylaw that we have, the shoreline tree preservation bylaw. Says nobody shall destroy, um, harm or harass the trees. Unless, and then it gives you the list of the unlesses, so again, it goes back to um, helping people understand how to read. Um, the, the language that is within these bylaws and making that plain language and um. What I'll speak to later, one of the other attachments is just trying to make it really simple, short page. So the average person doesn't need to read thirty pages of a bylaw. Um, that they can just look at a two pager and say, oh, okay, I don't need a permit for what I'm looking to do, or. Yes, I do, and here's who I contact, and try to make it simple.
Counselor Rial?
So i- in this particular case, can we not just put in there unless or uh, no person shall remove. Destroy or injure any uh, natural or native, they've provided that or. It, it's giving them the position then and there to know that there is. Appeal's not the right word, uh, the request or, 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 or the ability there, so that there, it's not, it's not absolutely definitive right there. If you wanna know more, go here. A- as opposed to waiting until I go through this whole damn thing before I find out that I can go there.
So, I'm just following the standard, standard bylaw writing procedure for the province of Ontario. And that is the format that is utilized. Um, this has been draft reviewed by legal and of course, before anything's finalized would be by then as well. What I think you're looking for definitely um, would be part of that, um. What I'm gonna call the attachment here, uh. Showing people the, the short, sweet summary and that, yes, we're protecting this, but here's the things that you can do. Um, I, I don't believe the bylaw itself is the appropriate place to have that language transition. It's up to us as staff and to members of um, all councils and other departments to make sure that we're clear when we're. Speaking about this bylaw.
Counselor Devolon?
Yeah, and I think in, in earlier meetings that we have, uh, bylaws have to be written in legalese. It's just a fact with the standard template. And we've talked many times, whether it's public meeting or for dummies attachment or i- that, that obviously, the bylaw in and of itself. Is, is the technical vehicle, but there's a lot of support and information that will be required around it. So that it uh, deciphers it from legalese, the common language. And those depending on whether a property owner or somebody that's in the trades, how that translate into what they need to do. You know, in layman's terms, I guess that's, that's the only comment I would have about that is. Because if it's not written in a form that's defendable in court, it's useless, and so, uh. Given that I don't necessarily like how they have phraseology in, in, in the legal document, in, in rules, whatever. Recognize, uh, as we all have spent enough time with lawyers and courtrooms, uh, that uh. We definitely need it done in a way that, that's, that's enforceable.
Counselor Rial?
Uh, uh, I'll buy that whole argument on, on, as long as we're developing both at the same time. If we're gonna develop the bylaw, and then we're gonna figure out what it means in English. Or are we gonna develop the bylaw and at the same time, create the coals notes? If that is what we're gonna do, I'm on board.
And I think that's the plan. Okay, next question. Uh, Counselor Moffett, then Counselor Devolon?
On number fourteen, anybody before that?
Uh, Counselor Devolon?
Uh, the twelve, basically that uh, um, the local municipal bylaw staff. Would not be enforcing, uh, that doesn't presume that there's not a feedback loop, would, would I be correct in that, Charlesy?
Yes, that's correct, and actually, we have really good relations right now with our local, both the. Local municipal bylaw enforcement and uh, building officials, so when they go out um, for building permit reasons. Uh, they do report and have communication with us now on our current bylaw, and I would hope moving forward, it would be the exact same thing.
Okay, Counselor Kennedy, did I see your hand up on this one?
Yes, as well, and uh, thanks for that clarification, I'm just hoping that you actually provide training. For our local bylaw enforcement so that uh, questions by either contractor or a property owner can be dealt with. Ninety percent of the time onsite rather than having to wait to get to, uh, feedback from the county.
I agree.
Yep, point well taken. Uh, Counselor Moffett?
I'll keep that thought too, thanks.
Uh, if we are at fourteen, just again, a clarification, um. Uh, I, again, appreciating why, why, how things are written, um, then this uh, is. Technically like lots of language, it's a pardon the French, but a bit of a cover your ass kind of situation language. Uh, is that then, if, if the county is not gonna be checking during weather events, and this is just. Sort of a, a required motherhood statement, then. Uh, am I to assume there will be no repercussions if contractors or persons doing work don't stop work during a weather statement?
So my understanding is, it is exactly as you described. Um, it is unlikely that our staff would be out to every single property that has an outstanding permit during that event. Because it may not be safe to do so, this is kind of, we told you to, you know, follow the rules, and if you didn't and something happens, well. You know, the county has specifically said it's not to occur during these times, and you went ahead anyways. Um, my understanding from legal is that is our, um. I don't wanna say are out, that's not the right word, but you know what I mean, our coverage, yes.
Any other questions on that? Uh, thanks for asking that one, uh, the, I, I didn't think that that item was exactly clear either, but. Thanks for your clarification. So, anything else on fourteen? Fifteen? Counselor Kennedy?
Um, I won't go into all the details here, but just, um, when we get into the actual bylaw, I have numerous, numerous questions about fish habitat. I find that the um, uh, on this particular question here, the. Critical fish habitat that's available in the county GIS is not worth the map it's written on. The uh, you're a lot better going to the lower tier. Um, I noticed on the county, at least the public one, now the staff one may be entirely different, but I'm just trying to look at it from a, a public perception. Um, examples of some spawning beds are not on there, whereas uh, DIZART has done an extensive. Uh, mapping on the official plan for that, so I just wonder if, if it needs to be. Clear that there is a habitat, critical fish habitat, and it's the only place you actually mentioned the bylaw, critical. Uh, anywhere, and I, I'll get into all that as we get into it, but fish habitat is probably the biggest piece of this whole bylaw. Uh, based on our official plan, the direct Department of Fisheries and Oceans, the implications on even pruning. On your land, if there is fish habitat and the requirement, if it's not known in an environmental assessment and uh. Has to be conducted or should be conducted according to our own official plan, but. I'll go through those as we get through into the meat of the bylaw, rather than me digging through all these pages here now, thank you.
Sure, a- and if I can um, just speak to that, so the county official um, GIS that is outward facing. Uh, the information on fish habitat comes from uh, Leo, which is Land Inventory Ontario, so that's done by M and R. We also have our official plan that is available online as well. And those fish habitat, actually, what we have is our, our technologist takes them from EISs that have been completed. And so we basically use the information out of the EIS or the site evaluation report uh, to. Delineate exactly on the property where that fish habitat is. And for all the local municipalities, it is our goal to have the official plans, their local official plans. Also as a um, a selection on the GIS that is outward facing. Right now, we have um, everyone and we're currently working with DIZART to get you up um, as well. Then we'll have them all outward facing, so it'll be one stop, you go to the community GIS. If you're in DIZART, you click on DIZART and both the county and DIZARTs will pop up. If you're in Highlands East, both the county and Highlands East will pop up, all on one layer, all in one space.
You have an idea timeline on that, just to create less than confusion for your people?
Sure, uh. I have been working with Jeff, I know he's been um, busy with the zoning bylaw, you, you may be aware of that. Uh, so twenty twenty one is definitely realistic, and I would say first or second quarter for sure. Your information is there, we just need to um, basically get it outward facing.
Uh, Counselor Moffett?
Thank you, yeah, the fish habitat one is, is uh, is important uh, to me as well, I'm sure it is to everybody. Um, I, again, looking for a clarification that uh, in some of that sort of uh, conflicting language. That if you take the various, if you take the definition of fish habitat as has been outlined and if. And then in, in the site alteration section, it almost reads as if you can't do anything, so. Is that again, simply the way bylaw is written, as opposed to interpreted or applied?
Yes, so it is the way that it is, it is written, and fish habitat ninety nine percent of the time is in water. And we're talking out of water for this bylaw, so we're talking adjacent to, which means we definitely do need to provide. Um, protection and be aware of what the work that we're doing, but the fish habitat ninety nine percent of the time is in the water.
Are we good on that one? Okay, number sixteen, um, I, I see that we've got um. Odor, dust, noise, et cetera, included there. Um, uh, despite having taken that portion of the, of the uh, bylaw out. Um, I can see, I, I guess I can see the point that you're trying to get at, but um. I would think that it, it's more specific to, you know, if there, if there's litter or contaminated material or. Or, you know, metals, things like that. Um, I, I'm just wondering if we need more specific or more clarity there?
So this is taken directly out of, there is specific legislation in Ontario regulations with regard to the quality of soil. That can be moved and excavated and, and put in. Uh, what you're looking at, this noise, odor, dust, litter, that is in relation to the soil only, not in relation to. Um, your noise bylaws that you would have at the local municipality, um. This is specific to this one item.
Counselor Moffett?
Uh, again, um, with an eye to the public consumption of this, the, the final paragraph of, of this section. Uh, again, while due respect, I put a little arrow and wrote seriously. Um, we have just soil challenges in Alberton County, but the average, the average person is, doesn't understand. Regulations and acts and soil, so it, it's all, to a lot of people, it's just dirt. And maybe, maybe a lot of people should know more about the kinds of soils that we have and the importance of them on the shield. But how are people supposed to know if it's, you know. Low me clay or low me sand or silty sand or, like, there's so many different. Um, kinds of soil. That it just, it, unless I'm, I, I'm hope I misunderstanding this, but it sounds like before you can do anything, you have to know what kind of soil you have. Is, is that the intent of this?
No, okay, no, de- definitely not, cuz I agree, I know exactly what you mean, is it a, you know, a B horizon soil with a lot of iron in it? Not everybody knows that, right? Um, silly people like me do, but yeah, not everyone, so no, what we're talking about here is just the fill. The, when you're bringing new material into a site, that material must be clean, that material can't have the glass in it, it can't have. It can't be taken from a gas station revitalization project, that's what we're saying here. And actually, some of, um, as I'm sure all of your emails have been inundated, mine have as well over the last week or two. And there was some really good um, consultation from a local company that said. Uh, that was specifically dealing with soil, not only this section, but also how to measure it properly. Um, and, and we'll discuss that probably a little later on, but uh, instead of going by weight. Going by area and by yards, and so the argument they were making was actually a, a really good one, and one I think we should consider through public consultation. But this is when we're talking about the movement of soil, not. I, you know, Mrs. X, need to know what it is before I even do work.
Any other question on sixteen, Counselor Rial?
Uh, uh, paragraph before, I still have a bit of a problem trying to understand. Uh, odor, I'm assuming, would come from, i- i- if, if what you're saying is true, and I, I firmly strongly support what you're saying, by the way. Uh, then the product, any new uh, soil coming in would be, would be checked, so that wouldn't be the issue. We'd have to be with the soil that was already there, so the two things that come to my mind would be odor and noise. So odor is probably something like that's been decaying and all of a sudden, somebody cracks it open and all of a sudden, wow, we get a really bad. Deal. Noise, on the other hand, if it's not created by the equipment, how does dirt make noise?
So blasting. Right, so. Yeah, yeah, yes, that's where that comes from, but when we're talking odor, yes, you're right. It is about decaying organic matter, as well as, like I said earlier, oil, propane, um, any sort of fuel that could have been. On the previous site where that soil is being brought from. Um, so I think this is just a generic definition out of the legislation, trying to cover um, pretty much everything.
And that's the part that scares the heck out of me, is it's trying to cover everything, and, and, and at the end of the day, it ends up covering. Either too much or nothing, because at the end of the, we're, we're caught with, what do we control and what do we not? And, and if it has to do with uncovering a uh. A hidden cache of, of, of stored oil that's been there for who knows how long. Well, that's a holy doodle problem, and, and there needs to be more than just one person getting involved with something like that. But if it's the smell because of a rotting tree that's been buried for, for a bunch of years, and now all of a sudden it's starting to smell. That's a completely different kettle of fish again, so, and, and again, uh. I, I, I just have problems with what is naturally occurring in terms of decay and what was man imposed either through a previous or current. Uh, activity, a- a- and, and this really doesn't give me a whole lot of guidance.
So again, we're talking about not what's currently on the site, we're talking about soil that we would be bringing into the site if someone was. Changing the elevation on their shoreline, um, changing a pathway or um, putting some sort of. Wh- when they bring new soil in, and it's the smell that would be coming from that soil, from where it's coming from. Um, and, and this is, it's regulated by the province of Ontario, um, the movement of soil and what can and cannot be in it. Uh, so we're just reiterating it, and, and I do, I understand what you're saying, it could be too much or too little, but. This isn't something, um, my understanding, and I can ask legal, but this isn't um, something county council. Can or cannot affect change on.
So it sounds to me like it's an item that we need to uh, provide a little bit of um. Educational information to people in, in part of that piece. Okay, I think uh, someone had a question on number seventeen, Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, I did, so, um. License of occupation and the whole uh, bit about, yeah. So we have people, first of all, in, you know, all municipalities or local municipalities buying their shore road allowance all the time. They're buying it because properties are selling, uh, they're buying it because they have a legal nonconforming structure in that. Area and they want to do a renovation to it or bring it into compliance, um. So, the, the last little bit there that says that municipalities should be encouraged not to sell their shore road allowance, I don't. Agree with, I don't understand why that would be in there, and. Just to further continue the, the, the conversation, um, someone wants to do a fire pit patio area. Next summer, and under this new bylaw, they need a permit to do that. So they go get a permit, but they don't own their shore road allowance. Is then DIZART or the local municipality gonna force them to buy the shore road allowance to do a fire pit? So, lots of questions there.
Yeah, so that would be entirely up to the local municipality, whether they want to sell their shore road allowances or not. Some do, um, almost. Every time it's requested and some do not, uh, and only in certain circumstances do they, it is a local municipal decision. Uh, but, putting a, any sort of use on that shore road allowance that a person does not own. Uh, would be something that they would be requiring that license of occupation for. So, whether that's a water line, whether that's um, you know, putting in culverts to. Or decks to the other side where there, where the property's on one side and they're on the other, there's so many different reasons. Local municipalities issue licenses of occupation and or sell the shore road allowance. And the most frequent one I run into with the selling of the shore road allowance is where someone comes in for a consent. And the property is undersized, and the shore road allowance. Even though there isn't a structure on it, would help facilitate making sure and that lot becomes uh, compliant with the current bylaw. Cuz that lot was created however many years ago, uh, so sometimes it's a condition of a planning. Uh, so sometimes it's a condition of a planning application, but up to that point, even under our current, uh, shoreline tree preservation bylaw, um, people who do not own their shore road allowance technically are not supposed to be cutting down trees or utilizing that property without the permission of the township or the local municipality.
Further, does somebody have, uh, their phone in a place that's vibrating or we're hearing a background noise? Um, did you have further, uh, questions or concerns, councillor Roberts, on that item?
No, I just think I want to talk to our planning staff at Dicard just to, uh, make sure we're on the same page, because for instance, now if somebody, uh, had a boathouse on Koshagowick Muck, uh, and it was legal non-conforming because it, because it met all those criteria and they wanted to, uh, fix it up, that we had, they had to buy the shore road allowance. That was a condition of, of a building permit. But if someone, as I said about, wants to do a fire pit, we've really ha- haven't had any say in it. We don't know if someone's doing something like that in that area. We don't know whether they own it or not. But in this case, a permit's now going to be required at the county, so that's going to trigger things that weren't ever triggered before. So I'm still a little concerned about it, but I'll just, uh, want to ponder it more and talk to plan staff at Dicard.
And if I could add, depending on the, um, materials and the fire pit that someone is building, no, a, a permit may not actually be required at the county to do that. Uh, so they, we would just encourage every property owner to ensure that where they're locating, whatever it is they're constructing, um, that they own that property. And there's a lot of people who do own their shore road allowance and it will be fine. But where they don't, they should talk to the local municipality.
Um, I, I have to say that this particular item triggered in me at, uh, the, the thought that, that there does need to be further conversation at the, uh, at the lower tier level about the direction they'd like to take with respect to shore road allowances. Um, any other questions on this, uh, this particular item? Okay, uh, next question. Councillor Burton and councillor Moffett.
I was nineteen again. Does anybody want to talk about eighteen?
Oh, go for it.
Um, just, uh, just a question, uh, does the approval go to council based on the scope of the project? Um, and then, but the answer is recommended the director, uh, be delegated authority, uh, and I know the timing is critical. But, uh, is, I, I guess my question would be, is, is that normal or is that standard bylaw procedure?
In the other municipalities that have site alteration bylaws, yes, it's usually staff who issue the permits. Um, only in extraordinary circumstances, usually where it's associated with a planning application, would it be before council and not necessarily for approval by a council, but as part of a series of applications to make a development move forward together.
And I also read in here recommended that the process be utilized for construction season before this is, uh, reviewed further. So that'll be for the, for upcoming twenty twenty-one.
Well, no, what I'm saying, sorry, what I meant here is that, um, if the bylaw is put in place by county council, that it run through for a whole year. Let's see how it works. Let's see, you know, what that staffing requirement is, the time requirement, uh, as well as how well does it work, um, timeline wise with staff being the ones doing the approval? That, and then bring it back to say, is this good? Is this bad? Because I think especially when you're initiating any new bylaw, um, not just for this part, but for all of the bylaw, we should look at it within a year, once it's, you know, had time to run through and people have started to use it.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if this is the right place for this. Uh, in the sentence where it says council may, uh, include as an option of specific circumstances where an application is denied, is that the, I had asked the question about there being an opportunity or a mechanism for appeal, um, and, and not that you want it, council doesn't want to get into the weeds. The council's job is to set direction and policy and then have hopefully staff undertake it and implement it. Um, most, most application or permit processes have some mechanism for appeal generally in the world. Um, and I think it's important to just keep in mind that at some point, if we get through this year and to see how things play out. I mean, you don't, you don't want to have an opportunity to, to appeal just because you don't like it or for every little thing, but there's, there should be some threshold for, uh, triggering an appeal, which I think would, would go to council in certain circumstances.
Right. And I, and I think that that would be a conversation once, um, my opinion would be once the public consultation piece is complete and you have a semi-final bylaw before you to have that conversation. What does that look like? And you're right, not just because I don't like the answer, but because we have, you know, there's, there's a, an engineering issue that we just can't seem to agree on or address. And, uh, yeah, maybe that is the point where it does go back to county council. But that would be for county council to direct, for us to build that in.
Councillor Rayal.
Are we going to be going through the, uh, the actual bylaw itself? Because there's a whole section in there regarding that kind of stuff. And if we are, then I have no questions here.
Yes, we are. At least in the same way that we're going through this document. Um, okay, next question. Councillor Moffett.
Uh, in number twenty, um, I, I think I've heard this echoed, uh, in other comments and other meetings, uh, and certainly today as well as the, um, uh, the amount of work, uh, that this process is going to generate for all manner of people. And I'm, uh, you know, it says here, uh, I think Andrew asked a question earlier about, about two staff and hired and trained and to do all this work. Um, the two staff, again, Charles, you can clarify, are based on what? Has there ever been a calculation of sort of the number of projects that happen in Halliburton County times the number of businesses or homeowners or, uh, how, how did we arrive at two staff being adequate? Or is this just the starting point?
So actually, and I will clarify the two staff, uh, so it would include for year one, and this is just my thinking based on, yes, we do have the local municipal building permits, um, and how many are issued in a year, as well as we also have all of the, um, we have tracking of all the current shoreline tree preservation bylaw. And so my thought, hopefully I can express this clearly, is for the first year of the bylaw, keep the forester on because he is experienced with that section of the bylaw and have one full-time staff person hired. And then because we're not, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's another full-time staff position, that it be a contract for a year for that second person and see how that works, um, again, for the first year. And then hopefully the two county staff will have enough experience and knowledge after the first year and after the training, um, to be able to move forward in year two on their own. Uh, again, I'm building in a little bit of leeway here because I don't know how it will turn out. It could be ten times more than I calculated based on existing permits, or it could be almost nothing. So I'm building a buffer in and that was just my recommendation. And it's obviously entirely up to council once we get to, you know, the budget process and even after year one, um, it, it, it is all up to county council how to move forward.
Um, do I see a follow-up to that?
Uh, thank you. I guess, um, and I appreciate again that, that this is, uh, we're, you know, kind of moving the Queen Mary here, so it's slow as she goes. Uh, and we're going to learn a lot of things along the way. What happens if the staff compliment or recommended isn't enough or the timelines and turnarounds aren't quick enough, uh, and, and work can't get done? And, uh, contractors don't make the money they were hoping to make because the process w- was not adequately or the process was flawed at the front end, but for good reason. So how do, how will we accommodate that? Is that just a, um, well, we're just getting her up and running, so sorry, you didn't have as much work pay your bills with this year. That's what I'm worried about is that as we learn, what are the consequences of, of, of as we learn?
So I am always open to options from, uh, county council and, you know, there could be a ability, because we do have the contract with a forestry company to have them assist if required, but that is only one person. Um, again, it's based on the best estimates based on existing permits. And I'm, you know, I'm fully aware that that situation could happen as councillor Moffett describes. And, um, it would be my responsibility to bring it to council, uh, to say we have an issue before, hopefully you're hearing the complaints um, on your end. And we'll have to come up with a solution together.
Councillor Kennedy and then councillor Rayal.
Is there the potential to, uh, go to an accreditation process, Charlesy, to help, uh, of, of contractors? So that if you get a call from the ABC company that you're go, they're going ahead with a, a project that they can do it and, and file online and, and here, and just, just to expedite the process and, um, you know, they'll follow up with pictures or whatever, but, and, uh, and accreditation process.
Yes, and I think that was asked, um, and, and I feel like it might be in the questions, but the answer is yes. I think after that first year, uh, we'll have a good idea. Uh, unfortunately, we have to test it out first to see how it works and how it goes. Uh, I'm not opposed to that in any way, and I think it's something we could definitely look at.
Councillor Rayal.
Well, I think it's extremely important that we rough out some of these processes before we get too deep into it for that very reason. Uh, as councillor Kennedy just said, some of it could be subcontracted, some of it cannot be subcontracted. Uh, there's various levels of decision-making that could be made. Some has to be made at council if, if, if it has to go that far. Some by the director, some by delegated people. But if we don't have a process with some defined, uh, I don't want to use the job description, because that's not really what I'm looking for, but something that says, how the hell do we get this done? Uh, then what you're being asked to do would be almost impossible because we have no idea how we're going to do this.
Okay, uh, thank you, councillor Rayal. I'm not sure that there's a response to that at this point in time. Um, if we could go on to the next question. Um, I'm wondering on twenty-two, if in fact municipalities are, should be exempt or not. Uh, would look for some comment there. Councillor Moffett.
Uh, yeah, I, I actually really struggle with this one because I think it's important that municipalities, um, lead by example. Uh, if, you know, if we're, if the faces around this table are so darn committed to this process, then we need to clean up our own house too. Uh, but I also have concerns for how that, any of, any of the, uh, options could impact operations or, um, you know, look at our, look at our water trail system. We've got thousands of signs probably nailed to trees all through the Frost Center area. Uh, and I can't imagine that we're going to go and, you know, tie them around the trees with pretty raffia and then replace them every three months. Like, so, uh, how do we reconcile that? And I, I guess, um, uh, is, is it, is it say as I like, do as I say or do as I do? So I, I have to say that I'm struggling with this one a little bit.
Um, I, I understand that there is a, um, a method to attach a sign to a tree that would be secure, that's a, a, an alternate to using nails. Can you clarify that?
Yeah, so, so there's a number of different methods that could be used, uh, but I think to the point and councillor Moffett can uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the signs that are already there and then having to go out and change all of them. And my understanding is sometimes more damage can actually be done if you're going to remove something that's been there for a while, because the tree has grown around it and provided its own, um, we'll call it a scabbing system, uh, to protect itself, depending on the material that was used. Uh, so going back may cause more harm than just applying good practices going forward. Uh, and there are a number, like I said, of, of ways to do that. Um, pretty bows would be great, but it's not realistic. There are systems out there uh, that could be used. And, and again, the draft bylaw, uh, can exempt local municipalities from that. And, uh, you know, I, I know there are existing signs and trails out there, so I, I put it to county council as to how you wish the bylaw to read.
Well, as you commented earlier, it, it is a go-forward bylaw. Um, and, you know, I, I agree to a great extent that, um, that we need to be good, uh, good stewards and examples to the public if we're asking the public to do things, that we should be responsible going forward to do, to do those things as well. Um, I'm sorry, I know that I saw a hand up here and I can't remember who it was. Did you have your hand up, councillor Burton?
I did, but my question was answered, but I, um, I just had a comment, I guess, on the, on the signs. It probably doesn't really pertain to what we're doing, but I would have absolutely no issue out here of, of a, a bylaw or sign by law or whatever, saying absolutely no signs, um, to be hung on trees, period. Um, I did go through this in another municipality and it was very successful, actually. That they, the, the, uh, the main culprits actually, uh, um, at that time, uh, conformed with us and it worked very well.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I would look forward to more, receiving more information about safe, uh, safe attachment of signs and, uh, I think we'll, we'll leave that one there. Next question. Uh, councillor Rayal then councillor Moffett.
Well, mine is related, I, I think it's related to the next one, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, on rivers, in the spring, we have flooding and, uh, some of them are considered to be floodplains and so on and so forth. However, they're underwater, uh, possibly as, as, as short as a week, possibly two weeks, maybe a little longer if the weather doesn't go. But after that, they dry right up. They, they become just natural stuff. So when we start talking about the thirty-meter setback, and again, I'm not sure if I have the right number here. Do we go past that thirty meters? Because if you did, some of our properties, uh, that controlled space would be more like eighty meters. And so consequently, I would have question, because out of that eighty meters, sixty meters of it would have only water on it for two weeks. And so that would be property that could not be used, or am I wrong?
I, I'm not a hundred percent sure I understand your question. Uh, when we're talking about flood areas and flood-prone areas, so I'm just going to use downtown Mindon because we can all visualize what those properties look like. And we can also visualize how sometimes they may be covered with water. It may only be for a week. It may be for a month. It happens. Uh, are we saying that through this bylaw, they have to be back, um, thirty meters? I mean, that would wipe, basically say anybody on Invergordon can't do anything. Uh, a- and that's not the intent of the bylaw. Um, is that your question?
Yes.
Just because they're flooded?
But it's not, obviously you're downtown, downtown Mindon and it's, it's, it's a, any of the rivers that we have, the Irondale being one of the most notorious. Um, a lot of the properties here, uh, are underwater, a part of them, not all, but part of them are underwater for a period of time. You can't build a house on them or at least you shouldn't. But, uh, once the water's receded, y- you can, you can put walkways, you can put playgrounds, you can, you can do whatever you want, as long as you're outside of that thirty meters. So that's not going to get affected.
No, that's not the intent. And the nice thing on the majority of the rivers you're speaking to is those lots are much larger than the ones that would be, say, downtown Halliburton or downtown Mindon. So there is even a greater ability to have that protection for the natural areas.
Thank you.
Councillor De Volin?
Yeah, and kind of along the same vein with obviously, uh, LiDAR mapping that's incomplete through the county and how that feeds back into it in terms of timing and process. And, and obviously, uh, Invergordon or Anson Street that I live on is the best example of that. Um, have we kind of looked ahead, how some of those things may be redefined, uh, where those, uh, I can think of in the area where I am, where the, those official, um, flood mappings are, uh, that were done a long, long time ago. They're coming forward and they'll be far more accurate. Um, you know, how that's going to integrate with this and how any of us that have property, uh, will likely know where that, that's what's going to go as it relates to this particular bylaw.
Yes, and the information and mapping that is being created through the flood mapping project, um, I've seen some examples, uh, which the, our, our consultant has put together already. And it is far, uh, more detailed and more informative than what we've been relying on in the past. Uh, not only is that mapping going to inform this process, it's going to inform other policy documents, emergency management, as well as, um, even some basic municipal infrastructure, uh, with regards to bridges and culverts that have, you know, maybe been in place for a significant amount of time. The information The information that we're, we're getting is, uh, yes, it far exceeds the wonderful mapping done in nineteen eighty-three. So yes, it will feed into this and, um, I'm not sure the definitions will not change as, uh, you just asked. Because those are, are set by the province, but the location of where those definitions apply. Definitely will be better delineated for all of us and. Uh, what we're finding is it's not just in downtown Mindon or downtown Halliburton. You know, we're, we're seeing the, the systems that go all the way up through Algonquin Highlands and, and into, you know, northern areas of Halliburton. We're seeing where like, uh, Counselor Ryle said, you know, maybe it's only flooded for a week, but it still is being identified. So much better information.
Okay, next question. Counselor Moffett?
Uh, number twenty-four, the legacy of existing shorelines, I think besides fish habitat has been the number one conversation I've had with people. Uh, and there are passionate positions on both sides in terms of. You know, uh, the lawns, the lake needs to, need to be changed and the armor stone needs to be replaced. And other people are saying sort of, you know, government hands off my land, it's been here for years. So. Uh, I wonder too about when we look at the, uh, the objectives of this bylaw and. And I don't know that we're going to achieve the objectives if we don't implement. Something that requires renaturalization, but I think that's a massive can of worms. Uh, I don't know how, uh, there would be, I mean, you can encourage people to renaturalize, but we've been doing that for years. Some people are, uh, some folks are just staunchly resistant to that. So I guess it's sort of a, uh, sort of a rhetorical question of, of how would that be done by whom? Uh, whose design? And we've already had conversations around different kinds of species. Uh, what would the follow-up be? Are there going to be any penalties? And most importantly, is it even legal to do that? And so I think we have to sort of that form and function that. Um, if, if the intent of the bylaw is to achieve seventy-five percent naturalized shorelines, how are we going to do that without doing this? And then how the heck would we ever do this? That's, that's what I hear the most of.
Sure, and, uh, so there was a number of comments, um, from the public consultation process as well as from council members. Um, even some local municipal council members who said. Why can't you put in the, if you coming for a permit, you need to renaturalize as part of that? And so I took that back to legal and the answer that was given to me is ninety-five percent of, um, municipal bylaws. Tell you what you can and cannot do and in the other five percent. It can push you to do, you being the property owner, to do something. So there are different scopes of municipal bylaws. The majority we see are the, you know, you can't make noise after a certain amount of time. You can't mow the lawn before a certain amount of time, but it can be created should county council wish to move in that direction. Um, it of course would have to be created and, and reviewed so that it is, it is legal, um, as you say. Uh, and, and it's up to county council if you want to direct that. It would work towards increasing. Um, total naturalization. So if someone came in for a permit and wanted, you know, to do something within that twenty-five percent. But the remaining seventy-five percent is grass, then, you know, you could have part of the bylaw that says. Okay, you can get the permit within that twenty-five percent area and another twenty-five percent has to be naturalized as part of it. Um, it's not different than now with the bylaw that we have in place where if trees come down. One tree comes down, we require them to put three in back in its place. Uh, so again, similar, not the same thing, but similar.
Hey, Counselor Moffett and Counselor Roberts.
Um, so two things, I, I'd just love to know what other members of county council think of that. Can of worms and, and also is that something, is that a specific question that could be put out to the public through the consultation and find out? What the world thinks of, of, of that? I, I don't, I don't know. It's, this is a, this is a really contentious one and I don't, I don't think without doing something on this will achieve the objectives. But I'm just laying that out there, um, and interested to hear what my colleagues have to say on this.
Uh, Counselor Roberts, then Counselor Devolyn.
So, uh, thank you. My, my thought is that, um, it, at this point should be a go-forward bylaw only. Don't disagree that we're not, uh, dealing with existing lots that. In time, we should, you know, we would prefer to see them naturalized. But bylaws are, uh, and council and how we move is a process. And we've come from having a tree bylaw, tree cutting bylaw. And then modifying that to make even the smaller diameters, making that a little bit stricter. I think this is a step and I think that we would be biting off more than we can chew to try to incorporate at this time. Any, uh, enforcement on trying to get people to naturalize something with, with, without the permit. So I, I think we should just be going forward with this right now and, uh, that'll be a process, maybe in a, a year or two, say. Um, and, and review and say, you know, what's, what's, are we ready to bite off another piece? I think it's a whole, it's too big.
Counselor Devolyn?
Yeah, similarly, I guess, I, I'm, this is a big enough can of worms that we've opened up. Uh, I guess there's already the director of planning has said that in a year, we're going to look at this on a whole bunch of levels. And, and whether it's in one year, two years, three years, if the reality is if the results are not the desired outcome, that if that component. Uh, was desired or required in the future to, uh, to get the outcomes that we want, that that would be. A, a version, you know, the two-point-O version rather than the one-point-O version that, that do not have regard and not to, to not necessarily pay attention. But to, uh, to get a start and if that's required in the future, then, uh, then we add that component to it. Given it, it, it would be a, a much rarer bylaw indefinitely, uh, have broader implications if we go down that road.
Counselor Kennedy?
I struggle with this one because, um, a lot smarter person than myself said, uh, when we're dealing with the local bylaw that was contentious. Uh, break it down into what the objective is and what the process is. So the objective is, is the, as Counselor Moffett said, the seventy-five percent shoreline. Um, the process is to, all the tools we've got in the toolbox, it all falls apart right here. I don't think we can get back to seventy-five percent unless we deal with existing. So my thought and is that going forward in the two-point-O, and I hate add more red tape and bureaucracy. But I'm suggesting that perhaps at the time of, of selling of the property, that a, an assessment of the shoreline be conducted. As an education tool for the new owner going forward. That that way with, um, the new owners coming in or with major renovations, that that be a part of the process. That they have it on file, much the same as they do almost a septic inspection now is almost a condition of sale. Um, I, I just think we have to deal with this and, uh, going back to trying to force people. It's probably not going to work, but going forward, if we had that opportunity to provide people with the educational material from a. Um, you know, there's an opportunity there for another job. You could be an inspector. Um, that, that's my thought. I really struggle with the whole intent of this bylaw falls apart right here if we, if we can't. Have some means to, to get people to, to restore their grass to shore to shore up to that. Thank you.
I can see some issues that might, uh, that we might run into with real estate agents. Um, and, and you know how we would enforce some kind of an inspection process during a sale. Uh, I, you know, I, I think we would have some difficulties with that, but, but I obviously need some more discussion about this topic. Um, I'll go to Charlesy then to cease.
Is this then, uh, through you, um, Adam Warden, something that should be, because it can be included as part of the public consultation? Um, providing a little outline of the objective and how would people like it to proceed right away at one year? Or, you know, give it another option as, as Counselor Kennedy said, you know, at the time of sale. And, and again, I also would have to look at how that would work, but provide some options and see what the public thinks. I'm.
I, I think that's an excellent idea. I think we do need to hear from the public, but we have heard from a lot of people that they would like to see us include. Uh, a renaturalization or restoration component to the bylaw. Um, you know, I, I like your idea about if you want to do work within the twenty-five percent. Then, you know, here's the trade-off. We, we want you to renaturalize a percentage at least. Um, of what remains if it's, you know, if it's a, a problematic, uh, shoreline. Um, and, and I also see that if we include a renaturalization component to the bylaw. That it, it could and should alleviate some of the concerns that have been raised. You know, by landscapers saying, you know, you're, you're cutting off our work, we're, we're offering another opportunity. Uh, it's just different kind of work as opposed to what they might have done before. But I'd like to see it as part of our, our public consultation. Uh, Counselor Rayal.
Uh, I have a tendency to agree with, with both Counselor Devolyn and Counselor Roberts and that is. To, and, and, and Counselor Kennedy as well, uh, do, should we have this at some point in time? Absolutely. I, I think it's, 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 it's the direction we need to move in. But how do you need an elephant? How, how, how do you get something done within the timelines that we're trying to, to, to accomplish? Should we have public consultation? The answer is absolutely yes. Uh, I, I think that's extremely important. The question is, can we put a first version of this, uh, bylaw out there without it? And, and, and I'm just for the period of time, uh, that it takes us to gather the information that we need. And in two-point-O, if, if, if that's how we're going to nickname this. Then, uh, then we could really put a solid program that would make sense both ecologically. To the construction people, to the owners of how to get back to or get towards the seventy-five percent. But I am not comfortable with building it into the initial bylaw because I don't think we're going to get it done, uh, without extending it huge amounts of time.
Um, what does council think about including this question in the consultation process to see what sort of reaction we get? Yes or no? Uh, can I see a show of hands for the yeses? And I'd be, okay, there's your answer. And, and then we'll know how to go forward with this particular one. So I think we're on, um, if my computer would wake up. Um, I think we're on, uh, number twenty-four. Any, I'm sorry, I'm just having a, a moment's difficulty with my computer that seems to have gone dead. Um, next question, sorry, Counselor Kennedy?
Uh, just point clarification, question twenty-five. Um, material and condition is regulated through Ontario Regulation one fifty-three oh four. Uh, would this then necessitate or require that material come from a licensed pit? Could that, is that the way you interpret that?
Uh, no, that's not the way that I interpret it. Um. So again, different construction companies, different landscape companies have different sources. Again, it's just that the material has to be clean. Uh, but thank you for actually asking about question twenty-five because. Uh, some of the public comment that I have received from local contractors, as I mentioned earlier. Was with regards to the five metric tons and a really great point was made that. And, and I don't know why we're talking about it now, should have talked about it before. Is, you know, sand weighs different than loam, which weighs different than rock. And so the idea put forward or recommended for us to consider was instead of a weight, use an area coverage. And so when I went back to the other municipal bylaws, other municipalities who have site alteration. It's interesting because they all speak to weight, not area. But this is a unique bylaw. This isn't the same as what, you know, the other municipalities do. And so maybe in this case, area is actually a better way to determine the disturbance rather than the weight of the material being moved. Uh, so I actually wanted to put it to county council through you, Madam Warden. Um, is this something that we should again, bring out to public consultation because this is where it came from? Um, removing the weight and looking at an area of disturbance instead as part of public consultation.
Counselor Kennedy, then Counselor Devolyn.
Yeah, thanks for that, Charlesy, because I, I'm confused as to how much is a half a dump truck? Is that a single axle, dual axle, tri-axle dump truck? So I think if I was on the outside trying to figure, um, I wanted to build a garden here. Um, I'll just, if I need a big load, I'll get a half a tri-axle. Um, so I think area is a lot better tool than, than weight. Thank you.
Counselor Devolyn?
Yeah, and similar, having run a, a, uh, concrete, uh, facility that deals with wet and dry aggregates all the time. And how to handicap and figure it out and that's in the business every day with scales. It's complicated enough, so a volumetric approach is definitely, uh, you know, August sand versus, uh, May sand. Uh, the same truckload is, is quite different. So volumetric is a huge improvement and thank you.
Uh, any other comments on, uh, on this section, Counselor Rayal?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with area, but then again, you get into how deep is the particular area where you're going to be filling in. So you've got a problem there too, is that if you're going to go like X number of square feet or meters or whatever the right term is. Then the question is, how much you, how, how deep are you going in? And, and if so, all that kind of stuff, so. Volume might be an option too, uh, not weight, but anyway, the long and the short of it is, uh, I can understand the challenge with the weight, but I don't know if. Area is going to be leaving a lot of subjective interpretation. To the person who is either supplying the material, who obviously wants to supply as much as he can. Or the person who is buying the material who wants to keep it as low cost as possible. Um, so maybe volume is a number that doesn't affect weight at all. So I can buy so many cubic meters of something and then that's it, it has to go into that hole. And then during the permit process, you can evaluate whether or not it's enough to do the job.
And most contractors are familiar with the use of, of, uh, of cubic meters. No matter what the material is. Um, Counselor Moffett?
I think whichever way we go, we need to stay away from, and I know that it's just a, to give a visual of, of a comparison. As Counselor Kennedy said, to, uh, a vehicle, I think you'd run the, run the risk of the average person underestimating. Uh, or overestimating and then, and then what, and then what happens? What's the outcome? We want to make sure that we don't. You know, unintentionally create another tree of life for everything that happens and just creates more work and more hassle and more confusion.
Okay, any other further comment on this area? Is this something that you want to put out to the public or, or not? Counselor Moffett?
Uh, similarly to my comments that I just made, I, I think that, uh, in general, with again, all due respect to everybody out there in the world. Uh, the only people that are going to be able to adequately answer this question are the contractors or the haulers. Uh, I think the average homeowner is, is, uh, the average homeowner is, is unlikely to be able to. Um, weigh in appropriately on this, so I think that's just more, one more, one more bit of muddle. So I don't know, I don't know which way you go.
Um, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that this question that you received, Charlesy, or, or comment was from a contractor or a landscaper. I'm wondering if we can put that particular question to them and see what works best for them.
Yes, it did. Actually, it came from a, a local contracting business, uh, and they had some really good comments provided. So I, I can go back to them as well as others. Um, we know who they are in the area and, uh, there, there's no reason we can't and see what they have to say about it.
How does council feel about that? All right. Uh, Counselor Shell?
I was just going to suggest kind of the same thing, Warden, that maybe even this could be one of the questions added to the public consultation. Because I think you'll find that a lot of contractors, um, participate in that and it might be a good educating, educational time for, um, people who. Like myself, who I, I would not visualize what half of tri-axle load would even be, so. That's just my thoughts because it's, it's all great to me.
Having worked with a contractor for a number of years, I can picture it exactly, but a lot of people can't. Um, so to the general public or ask the contractors and, and developers specifically? Counselor Roberts?
Well, I, I'm thinking then just that public consultation because they will be part of that public consultation, no? They will, they'll be, they're listening, you know, and I think if it's just, is one of the questions out there, they'll, they'll be able to comment on that.
Okay, I was just kind of hoping that we could resolve that ahead of time. It's not the sort of thing that the average, uh, public member would, uh. Would have the response to, um, or are concerned about it. You know, I think it's, it's something more for contractors, but sure, we can, we can do that. Counselor Moffett?
I was just going to say the opposite, that I, I, I think it's save ourselves the hassle of. Um, and, and again, I'm not trying to insult anybody, but save, save the challenge of inviting comment from, uh, folks who. Folks who, as Counselor Shell just said, the average person doesn't know, it's not their world. Uh, and I think you run the risk, if you if you put it out for the public consultation, you run the risk of. Of muddying the muddying the response, whereas the folks who. Who do this for a living might be better equipped to, no pun intended, to just say. Agree amongst themselves of what it should be, but I mean, I'm it's not a hell I'm gonna die on.
I've I've gotta say that I I agree with Counselor Moffett. I think that this is something that we can resolve. Before we go out to public consultation and and would have. There's an aspect of a cooperative relationship with the with the contractors that that might be helpful. Counselor Real.
One of the things that we know when we go to public consultation, whether we like to use the word or not, we're gonna end up with a lot of lobbyists from both sides. Who are going to voice and strongly express their opinions. I'm hoping it doesn't drown out the average person because that's the people who really need to be heard. So public consultation, I don't know how else you can get around it, and we're gonna we're gonna end up with 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 extremely robust arguments from those who. Who are extremely passionate on both sides and we just have to deal with that as it comes up.
Okay, we'll move on to the next next question. Which is? Counselor Kennedy.
And it's question twenty seven, the clear definition of larger project. I think that we've already sort of answered that with the small. Project that you you put those two together as we go about to to get feedback.
Okay, Counselor Real.
Same same question, I'm just wanting to get, I was trying to get the schedules and I couldn't find them. But to differentiate, so that in my mind, I could I could see the difference between no permit, permit and large site. So once I get the schedules, I'm assuming I'll be able to find that information there.
You're not alone in not being able to find the schedules. Were they actually attached to something or I could not find any of the referred to schedules? That were that form part of the bylaw.
So I do not have it up on my computer right now. If they weren't, then I will take responsibility for that and make sure they are sent out today. They were included with the last meeting as well, so they are on iCompass. Unfortunately, I can't answer that at this moment just because of this computer. Either way, I will be sure they are out by the end of the day.
Thank you. Counselor Kennedy.
Yeah, I I wasn't concerned about it cuz I thought the last time that the number of schedules were going to change. As a result of the input that counsel has given, so I thought maybe the the final schedules would come out after today's discussions. Rather than seeing interim ones that may end up making some changes.
Okay, next question. Counselor Moffett.
Uh, I'm on number twenty nine. Is that where we are? So, uh, and bear with me here, so to go, I pre, again, I, there's all kinds of sources and links and resources out there. So I took it upon myself to venture into the on land system. So I can tell you that my address has no records attached to it, and when I finally found the map of my property, it says there is no address. So you need your PIN, you need your instrument number, you need, you need, you need, and it also costs, so. There's a lot of information available within those portals and I would. Ask that somewhere on our shoreline bylaw website, there's of one of the many education pieces is. Before you start, you're going to need your instrument number, your property identification number. So people know ahead of time what it is they have to have to get in there, cuz once you're in there, I spent, I spent almost thirty dollars. Buying and downloading the wrong documents and and I'm sort of familiar with the site, so again. I in defense of the average person who's just trying to do the right thing. Let's find the places where there are tripping points and make sure that they are easily digestible for someone who's just trying to get a job done.
Thank you for that. Next question. Counselor Moffett.
Uh, thank you, number. Number thirty two, I was confused by the answer. I know that I think the first part of that question, if not all, that was mine. In relation to ministries of natural resources that are. It doesn't, not M and R doesn't have the resources that it used to have and there is sometimes a very, very slow response, she said, being polite. But the answer is mostly about conservation authorities and and there's only a part of one in part of Halliburton County, so. Uh, so I think the, what's gonna happen in in case, in the cases of inaction by another agency outside of a conservation authority? And then secondarily. The county should not penalize property owners in situations where there's a clear, where it's clear another agency is delayed. How would you know there's a delay and how much of a delay is acceptable? And it may sound like nickel and diming. But but I think we need to make sure that there's as much information at the front end to help people. Figure it out and then with with pretty clear timelines at the back end or consequences or what ifs when these things occur. So that we don't have too many shadowy corners.
Sure, so clarification, the the answer, the only reason that it's speaking to conservation authorities is as I went through the other. Areas of jurisdiction, including M and R. This is where the only overlap would occur is with Crow Valley Conservation Authority. So if someone has a permit with M and R and has a permit with the county. I could not find a way in which M and R would stop or halt. The work being done on the shoreline. Under our bylaw, so them holding it up for a year or two. They can, the property owner can still do the work under our bylaw and will not have a negative impact on any other. Other than in the small area where there's overlap with the Crow Valley Conservation Authority. And we have worked with them this year on a number of items and so far I don't have a complaint or an issue with the amount of time. And that's even with the current public health situation. They have still been doing site visits and still been working with our staff to make projects move forward. And in answer of what is a a delay, I believe they are legislated and have timelines, the conservation authority for their permit process. So whatever that is, is what would be acceptable, I think, to the county of Halliburton.
Uh, did you have a question, Counselor Roberts?
Did, it's sort of different, but still on this question or still on this number thirty two. So unless someone had a follow up? Okay, I'll ask a question then. So. Remind me, Charlesy, how long is a permit good for? So someone applies for permit as an example. In September twenty twenty one. Um, and they're just gonna start this whole big new build, say, and. What if there's a delay just because construction of the whole? House project and including landscaping in that area takes longer, so how long is our our permit good for? And what if there's a delay because of? Like a contractor can't get there, they're too busy or how's that work?
Yeah, that's a great question because I've kind of run that through my mind a couple of times if I'm building a house and. I know that it's going to take, you know, six to eight months to get that to a point, that structure to a point where. Then I'll be concerning myself with the landscaping portion of it afterwards. Uh, and my access to the water, what we would do is, um, and thinking of this in a process term, we would be happy at the county to do a preliminary review. Of your, as many building officials do. And say, you know, once you're to your occupancy point, then come back and we'll, you know, the permit looks good. Your, what you're proposing to do looks good, but wait until the next summer and then come in and get it. Again, right now, it wouldn't cost them anything because it's a zero fee being recommended, but it could also save them cost later on if there were a fee attached to it. So that would hopefully avoid waiting on or having some sort of delay based on a building. Project, which again would be sometimes out of the control of the property owner. You're waiting on materials, weather, weather is a big thing here. So we would work and provide them the best advice, um, so that that expiration after the. The if they don't start it within the the ninety days, then there's, you know, it expires anyways. So that's why we wouldn't say, oh, well, if you're gonna come and apply in September, but your build's not gonna be done till June, come back and see us in April. Would be probably what we would say.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question because the the ninety day period and 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 the number of things that could influence that period at no fault of the. Applicant did concern me, so I'm I'm glad to hear that we're gonna recommend that kind of approach. Were there other questions on this? Particular number. Okay, next question. Um, I I guess I should ask at this point, does anybody need a quick break? I had really hoped that this meeting would be finished in the morning, but you know, with the rate we're going, it's it's. We need to get through this and we need to do it today. So. A five minute break? Or no, carry on. Five minutes. Counselor Moffett.
Can we finish this document? We're almost finished this one and then take a break, does that make sense?
Okay, that does make sense. All right, next question. Counselor Kennedy, then Counselor Moffett.
Uh, thirty four. Drawings by a qualified professional, you your quick answer, which was nice to see was a no. However, uh, the bylaw, it actually says things in there that says you may be required to have a certified person. And then the, uh, uh, so just comment on that for me, please.
Sure, for the average person who's coming in, I know, the answer is no, you can. It's the same as when you're coming in with a planning application. While it's great to use a consultant and sometimes their drawings are more clear. You as the property owner can create the drawing yourself and as long as the measurements are acceptable and legible, we will accept that. If you're coming in with a large permit where there's engineering required, maybe you're doing an elevator from the water up. Because you've got slopes of a certain size. That, yes, then a professional will be required, but hopefully we would have had that conversation with the property owner. Before they move forward with these with these projects, so they know what's required and have that material also available on our website. So people have a quick list of, okay, I need to do this. But I'm gonna say majority, no, you're not going to need that.
Thank you.
Counselor Moffett.
Uh, sorry, backtrack to thirty three, one quick question. The internal database will. Track properties where work is being done and it says. And will provide a posting similar to the building permit, so that's a some sort of posting on the properties. Brightly colored that people can see, is that, you don't mean the public is gonna look at the internal database, you mean there's a?
So we are required to follow INFPA, which would require the protection of personal information. No, what I was envisioning is similar to when a planning application is on a property, you have this beautiful orange neon sign. That is posted usually in your front window or somewhere visible and that would be. Your identification that the county has, you know, seen that you've registered your property and you've put it up. So that your neighbors know you're not doing something you're not supposed to be doing. There's a number of ways to go about that. There could be an online downloadable form, so when you put your details into the system through the county. Website, you can generate your own or we could provide it through uh, through our office. The only difference is if you're downloading it yourself, if you don't have orange paper, then, you know, it may become difficult. So we have to work through that process, but yes, it would be something the property owner would post.
However, not nailed to a tree. Sorry. Okay, following the next question. Counselor Moffett.
Uh, number thirty six, uh, if perhaps, Charlesy, can remind me what, how how high watermark documents are available and easily accessible? Because, uh, high watermarks, I think, have a potential to be extremely problematic to the average person, so. Uh, walk me through how, what documents are are easily and avail, easily available and accessible, please.
Sure, so again, that goes back to on land, which may not be as easy as we thought it would be. I will, uh, I've actually made a note to look into that, see if there's a better way to make that, um, because that's really the surveyed level. Now. There are other ways to obtain high watermark information and. One other option, which I put in here as part of the example, is. The county of Halliburton has amazing aerial photography information, which currently is not open to the public. And there, the current data that we have is required to be municipal only under the license for which we purchased it. But the license for the two thousand thirteen data has expired. I mean, by expired, I mean, our requirement to keep it only municipal ended after five years and when we purchased the new. So we could also use that as a visual tool to the outside so that a property owner not just pulls up their parcel fabric. But would actually be able to see the scoop information that we have available to see where in times of. High water, you could overlay, um, again, using the GIS, the aerial photography with those. Those water feature mapping, which is part of the. The layers that are available on on our website and they could print it off at home and do their drawing on that as well. And once the LiDAR is completed, that would also, I believe, and. It has always been my direction from county council that that information would be made available as well. That's not available yet, but when it is.
Counselor Devol. Well, Counselor Moffett mulls that response over.
Yeah, and and kind of in that same vein. Obviously, with the infrastructure that's been replaced through the Trent Severn, from an operational point of view, it's wonderful. Uh, some of these dams have the ability to hold more water in the watersheds now and to allow more water to pass through more quickly, which. Obviously mitigates flooding that we seasonally have with those infrastructures allowing for water. To be held at a higher level before it goes over spillways or some of the other elements of those dams. Do you think that that's likely to have any implications on high watermarks going forward?
So that is a question that has been asked to the agency responsible for that. My understanding is in the county of Halliburton, these water levels have fluctuated through our water systems over many, many years. Um, and the high watermark, the way a surveyor does it is they have a a standard that they use and that. Basically stays the same through time, but I did want that to be clarified because I had the exact same question. So once I have an answer, I will provide it to you.
Um, any more comments or questions about that? That particular question? Okay, moving on. Next question. Counselor Moffett.
I really am trying to vet my own comments here so that I don't. Number thirty eight.
This, you know, I don't worry about the number of questions you've got. The public have got equal number and more questions and the more that we can clarify here and now. I think the easier it will be for everybody going forward.
Yeah, I I agree, thank you, and and at least if not more of than half the questions I'm asking have been given to me from the public, so. You know, if we can ask ourselves questions today and it means one or two less people in a in the. Public consultation process, then that might help that go more smoothly. Number thirty eight, are there any consequences if somebody chooses to register? Their project versus get a permit? If they pick the wrong project, what are the consequences?
So. This is thirty eight speaks to large and small. So are you saying if they don't register the small?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, well, so similar to the question of how are we going to know who's doing what? Unfortunately, it's going to be based on complaints, so complaint basis. If we are then sending staff out to a person's property and work is being done that was not permitted. Whether it was from the self evaluation and just requiring to report that they're doing work cuz it's a small job versus large. The consequences could be anything from a stop work order. To a fine, it would depend on the work being done and the the disturbance to the to the site area. It would be no different than if someone had reported that they were, you know, doing a small walkway down to the shoreline within the twenty five percent. And I believe it was counsel who had said if they do the reporting, self-reporting. And I believe it was council who had said if they do the reporting, self-reporting, just being aware that bylaw may stop by. And so if bylaw stops by and sees that they've then cleared fifty percent of the shoreline down to the rock, then yes, there would be consequences even if they did report their their work that they were doing. So each situation will be different. No, there's no consequence. I I guess there's it's not that there's no consequences that you don't want to be caught or told on by your neighbor. And I think that was the idea behind those signs that people could post to say, hey, look, I did register. So at least the neighbors do realize, okay, they've, you know, at least they're aware of the process and hopefully are following the rules.
Thank you.
Okay, next question of Counselor Rayo.
It's still on the thirty-eight. And and the contents of the application is legislated. I haven't really talked to people and and the question that that they're asking me and now I'm going to ask you is not wanting multiple applications with all kinds of different stuff. Can we not have a a an application that basically identifies the, say, for instance, a project that requires a permit? So here's the requirements that they have to fill in blanks. And then an optional section that says if your project is greater than or falls into or whatever, you must now fill in the remainder. Because otherwise, we're going to getting people who are putting just over the the line in terms of requiring a permit having gobs of information that has absolutely no value in in the in the actual determination of whether the project should or shouldn't be going forward. I mean, we're asking people to either get information or record information that doesn't relate directly to the project they're working on.
Yes, and I believe that was a comment that was put forward by county council in our previous meeting. And so the idea was to have that pre-screening and yes, to make the application pro- process appropriate to the size and scope of the project.
Thank you. Next question. Next question. Well, Counselor Devolin, then Counselor Rayo.
Well, I'm jumping ahead to forty if somebody isn't have one in between there. Opportunity for an applicant to appeal the decision to council and that we could consider it in the future. And I guess this is so that we don't get into some of the challenges that originally plagued the OMB and those sort of things is let's try with formally without that mechanism. And if it's problematic, then obviously we can add an element that obviously isn't used capriciously. Is that kind of why that answers there in that form?
Yes, and it's similar to as discussed before. Let's see how it works for a year, see where we're at. I'm hoping that we'll be having zero issues wanting to come forward. But again, you never know. So let's take the time and see where we are in a year and have the conversation.
Counselor Kennedy?
This this raised the point to me, is this an opportunity or is it a possibility? That committee already in existence such as the land division committee could be tasked with with this additional, should it be required, rather than directly going to councilers? That tool is there to review property issues already. And that was a way of addressing what Counselor Devolin was talking about, maybe.
So no, land division is specific under specific sections of the Planning Act for making specific decisions. However, the county of Halliburton does have the Planning Advisory Committee, which I could look into. Now that is under the Planning Act. However, I could ask the question and see if that's something that this could go to. There's also the ability of the county, and this is a whole other kettle of fish, which we don't want to talk about right now, but we could if you wanted to. Municipalities do have the ability to create their own appeal tribunal, but that again is under the Planning Act. And I don't know if it would apply to this because this is site alteration under the municipal act. But again, I could ask the question.
I think we would like to see a response to that. Counselor Rayo?
I just have a quick question on thirty-nine. It just basically says, yes, see attached proposed process, and I just couldn't find the process.
So that's something that will be forwarded to you later on today. Any what's what would be the next question that anyone's got? I I go ahead, Counselor Moffett.
Isn't the the process that Counselor I L is looking for, is that not the sure that the self-assessment and reporting tool? So we already have that in the package. Is that not what we're looking? That's what that means, is it not, Charlesy?
Yes, that's this one, the not pretty page, which I will, which I will explain why it is in the format that it is. But yes, that is the one thirty-nine is referring to, the shoreline self-assessment and reporting tool.
Because it just says a two-tiered system. I'm assuming that okay, I'm thinking municipal government, you're thinking, okay, sorry. I did not read the question properly. I'm thinking tier one as in county, tier two as in as in the municipality. So I apologize for that.
So on question number forty-three, I'm just open, hoping that we all have an appetite to ensure that that our local bylaws at some point are in alignment with 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 what we're agreeing on here. Okay, any other questions on this document? Okay, I think that we will now ask for a fifteen minute break and carry on after that. So if we could reconvene at eleven fifteen, is that reasonable? Okay.
Liz, can you hear me?
Yep.
Warden Anderson, we're now live. You can continue with the balance of the meeting, please.
Thank you. Okay, we've gotten through the the council's Q and A. Hopefully, that would have clarified a lot of the questions we had. I think we need to keep in mind that the bylaw itself has been written in legalese and hopefully the supporting documentation will help to resolve some of the other concerns that we've got. So let's have a look at the information doc that has been prepared. Hear comments from Charlesy and ask any questions about that.
Thank you very much. The last couple meetings, it was advised by county council that we needed a summary document, something quick and short that people can take a quick look at and hopefully provide the document will provide enough information for them to understand what the shoreline protection bylaw what the goals are and what they can do on the property. And specifically, I was hoping to create a document that didn't say what you can't do. You don't do this, you don't do that. We want people to know they can use their shoreline. We're just providing some responsible ways in which to manage as a whole of a system. So we're not just looking at individual properties on their own. We want this to be a system approach across the county, so the same standards apply across the board. But also provide some clear information that if you are looking to do certain things, you should be contacting the county based on the contents of the bylaw. So I'm happy through you, Warden, to go through page by page, see if there's any comments. Is this what you were looking for as county council? And the idea would be when the weight in site is up, that this would be included as reference material for people as they're providing their comments.
Okay, I guess the question is, is this what we were anticipating? Do you think it does the job that we had hoped it would do? Counselor Devolin?
I think it's a great start in terms of its intent. Particular elements during this whole process with ourselves and the public, whether there may be some elements. And and is it a standalone resource only by itself? I would say no, and there will be other ones that go with it. But it's, I think, in terms of pictures and labeling and and some of these things like conceptually, you know, we've got four pages here. It's a great start for people to begin to think about it and figure out whether by online with other resources or contacting staff to know what next steps potentially would be.
Counselor Moffett?
I agree with Counselor Devolin, and I don't know whether I should get my red pen online or or have the conversation outside, but there's some inconsistencies, I think, that need to be. No, I think there are inconsistencies that need to be fixed. The word meters is spelled differently in it's inconsistent throughout the document. I I just wonder about a little bit more detail. They, I know the whole, the point is not to recreate the bylaw. But in the very first paragraph, it talks about algae. Is it important to say blue-green algae or not? I don't know. And I'm not asking for answers. I'm just throwing out what my little marks here say. Second, third paragraph is free of charge permit. Well, it's free of charge now, but it won't be. So I don't know. Again, this can be changed as we go along, so I don't know if that is important at this point. In terms of the impacts, there's three listed on the second page, algae flooding and erosion and habitat loss. You know, is is there a need or room to? Those aren't the only three. Maybe they are as much as we need. Again, not looking for answers. On page four, to simply say research shows, to me, sounds a bit like four out of five dentists agree. So should we credit that? You know, accord according to the World Lake Health Association research, their research shows, so sort of who said it? And again, that sentence says seventy-five percent of shoreline needs to be naturalized to prevent algae. Okay, but there's, it's not only algae, there's other things. So should it say needs to be naturalized to prevent a variety of negative impacts? So that it's just one phrase, you don't have to list them. Should it say half the shoreline in Halliburton County? Because Halliburton is also a village. In the two lists about work that you may do without a permit or with a permit, they're not the same list as on the assessment tool, and does that matter? And in the part that says permit process, it says you can create this on your own using GIS mapping that is freely available on the county website or by creating your own drawing. And again, I think I'm splitting hairs here unless you've your project fits with the criteria where you need a qualified person. Doesn't really matter. And I, there's a couple of other little niggly things that don't matter. I wondered, this is a question that I I'm pretty sure I've gapped on. This is a really pretty picture. This is the ideal lot and it, but it's not, it doesn't reflect the reality of Halliburton County. Can you split this up? If if the landscape of your property dictated, can you have your? Could you have your dock in one place and your and your deck in the other? Or can it, does it have to be all in the same percentage? Or can it be broken up? Because looking at this picture, this picture tells me that I can only have one, one, one window to the lake. So that would, that would be, that would be the the sum of my comments. The red pen, but that is my background, so.
No, these are great comments. And in creating this document, as I'm sure you can imagine, when Charlesy White wrote the information to be put on here, it was very technical and she was told that it was not plain language. So the consultant plain languaged a lot of her words, which I think is great because I never could have been as clear. Let's put it that way. So yes, I will take those comments back. And if any member of county council has suggestions, by all means. I believe even that blue wording on page three, where you're saying research shows, I did have it's a scientific research provided by the Ministry of, it was shortened to research. So I absolutely agree. Maybe there's some tweaks we can make to the way in which the information is presented. And yes, we can credit where credit is due, where that science comes from, absolutely. And with regard to the picture, yeah, we went back and forth on this a little bit. And the ideal and my recommendation to county council would be that we try to ensure any natural disturbance of the shoreline is within one cohesive area, understanding that there are existing situations. My property would be a good example of one where the pathway to the shoreline is on the far west side, but the water access is actually, you know, six hundred meters away on the far east side. So the ideal is yes, to have it all in one area. Reality and topography will will dictate where this should or should not be located. And no, we wouldn't just throw out an application because it had two areas, as long as those two did not equal the twenty-five percent, understanding that that's maybe not the ideal, but because of the specific lot may be required. May I ask, are we suggesting an additional graphic to show a different type of property? Or is this satisfactory? Because it's really just a high level of what the intent of the bylaw is.
If you're looking for a comment for me, I I think it, I mean, you don't want to nickel and dime it to death, but you also, the purpose is clear, concise and consistent. And and I think there's some tweaks that need to be made to this public facing document in order for that to occur.
Oh, and if I may, again, with those, the lists on page, I guess that's page three. Again, it was shortened because the list in the bylaw is much, much longer. So they recommended that we pick the most likely construction or development that would occur and list those, understanding that we're hoping and directing people to come to the county for more information. So if they had some other idea, they could, they could contact the staff.
As long as they're consistent, like they don't, they don't conflict with the other list. I'm wondering if rather than than extending the document by adding another diagram that there isn't a way to to just put in a comment that says that this is an example of or, you know, that they're just letting people know that there might be other other configurations. Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, just to reiterate with Counselor Moffett, my concern was the on the research shows that seventy-five percent shoreline needs to be naturalized. And I was, my recommendation just to delete to prevent algae, more or less just to protect their water quality. And then I wondered where the the research that you got shows that less than half of our shoreline remains natural. There's a lot of lakes out here that aren't even developed. They are certainly still natural. Anyway, that was just a comment in the if we end up doing an example of this one with the all your disturbance in one area, then we need to be able to tell people that if you have unique properties, you can do it elsewhere or elsewhere. Other shoreline protection bylaws and from our neighbors, you still use a lot of the twenty percent or twenty-five percent maximum, but you're allowed a number of disturbances that do not as long as you don't exceed that as a total. So that was just a comment on that.
Other comments on this document? So Charlesy, you've got some input there and and we'll look to see a a few changes with that. So can we go on to the top ten fact document?
So the top ten fact document again was taken from the list of almost fifty questions from county council and was put together in coordination with the consultant, them being people who are not as into this bylaw and this process as we are and thinking if they were the property owner, what would they want to know? So again, some of the language is not the exact same as the answers that I responded to county council because they've been plain languaged. But this was something else that was suggested when we do a virtual public consultation, that it be included because they were because they were potentially uh, areas of significant interest to people who hopefully will be participating. And I'm open to suggestions if you think uh, as county council that this isn't required or that um, an, an different question should be included. I'm, I'm happy to, uh, to take all that into consideration in creating that final document to bring up for public consultation.
Comments, Counselor Moffett.
Um, just going from experience, when we embarked on the um, septic reinspection program, an FAQ not dissimilar to this was established. Uh, and as questions came forward, there were, when there seemed to be, everyone keeps asking this question, then we would add it. So it wasn't like a full-time job or, and it wasn't onerous. It was just um, a, a living, a living FAQ list that could be added to when you found consistencies in certain kinds of questions.
Any other comments on this portion of this document, Counselor Moffett?
Uh, me again, looking for reminders, um, the, how long will it take? The turnaround is proposed to be thirty days. I, did we talk about that before? Cause that just seems like an awful long time to me.
So we did talk about it before and again, um, going based on standard review time to ensure that uh, the staff who are getting the applications. If we only have one on the desk, then obviously the thirty days would be less. However, uh, understanding we don't know how many permits we may or may not be getting, thirty days is a standard turnaround timeline. At least in the planning world it is, uh, but I, I would be afraid to make a commitment of anything less until we knew um, the volume. I think the volume will determine the timeline rather than the content of the permits.
Counselor Roberts.
Well, I, I really like this fact sheet and I think it's important to have it, it jumps out at you. So that if you're going to be undertaking some work, you know, it's, those are the main questions. But I also really like what Counselor Moffett said, it doesn't mean this is set in stone. If we find that other questions come up, they can just be added to. But this, I think, you, Charles, he asked at the beginning, is this something we want to see? And I would say most definitely.
Yeah, absolutely. Counselor Devolon.
Yeah, in my comment, any element of this, whether it's the, the bylaw or the, the, the uh, pretty picture, part of the previous presentation of FAQ, this is a living document and, and as it grows and evolves and we implement it and whether it does or doesn't meet objectives is in wherever it's contained is to give the notion that people need to pay attention to this over time because it, it absolutely will, will evolve and, and improve, uh, depending on, you know, the results and volumes that we get.
Counselor Moffett.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Charlesy, go ahead and respond and then we'll go to Carol.
And, and I was just going to say, I think all of these are living documents until there is that final version and following public consultation. I agree, these are items that can be updated to meet the needs of what is being asked of us when, when we go to that consultation period.
Counselor Moffett.
Um, I do, again, with my sort of, I'm not even a school teacher, school teacher's red pen here. Can I just forward some suggestions to Charles? Like there's inconsistencies, for example, in some places it says property owners and other places it says the property owner. Um, and I think, you know, in terms of consistency and clear language for the consumer, uh, it's important to just clarify where possible, but I don't want to take the time today and I'm not saying that my suggestions have to be acted upon, but I'd like to provide them. Maybe to Charlesy behind the scenes, just to say, had you thought of this or had you noticed that?
By all means, I think that would be appreciated by all. Done all right, Charlesy?
Absolutely, any uh, member of council is more than, more than able to send me their comments and suggestions, absolutely.
Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns about the uh, the FAQs? Okay, uh, so next is the self-assessment tool. And I would look for questions or comments about that, um, but Charlesy, me, you may want to give us a bit of a lead in.
Sure, uh, so as you can see, this one is not as pretty as the others. The reason being, uh, the, the tool that they communications folks uh, suggested is that this actually be on our website. So you could fill it in and based on your answers, the next answer or question would pop up. So this is a flow chart of how that would, would work. Um, this isn't what it would look like. And based on the answers to the first question would lead you through the online tool to the next set of questions. Um, so following the blue arrows, I guess, would be the way to think of this. And um, I've already received some really good comments and suggestions on this. Um, again, I think people thought this was the checklist and so I should have been more clear that this would be something that you could do online. But understanding not everyone will be online, we, we will need to have a short paper version so that people can quickly follow through, or if they're in the office, we can uh, as staff walk through that, that checklist with them. So that's kind of the background to it.
Counselor Kennedy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did, um, it goes back to my pet peeve, uh, the fish habitat. I, I think, uh, I like the idea of the flow through and, and um, you know, the yes and no and, and it directs you elsewhere. But you've got, the only reference you make or is, you have it in way down and buried is that, or is adjacent to fish habitat. But when you go through any of your permitting, if it is adjacent to fish habitat, it changes all the rules. So I'm just wondering if it should be highlighted somewhere in here. Um, will your project be adjacent to fish habitat? And if, then, then contact the county. Um, I, I just, I don't want the people to think that they can just, you know, put their five meter walkway through uh, to get to the lake, thinking that they're fine, find out that they're adjacent to, to fish habitat, whatever that definition ends up being. And then find out that you actually do need a permit to do that.
Some more clarity around that, that's possible, absolutely.
And the order, I'm not a percent sure on, but anyway, that's just me.
Counselor Moffett.
Um, this goes back to the ownership of the shore road allowance. Does it matter in here whether that question is asked? Or is that a separate yet related issue around, certainly Counselor Roberts asked some questions earlier. We did the same in Algonquin Highlands, if you want to make changes to a structure that's on a shoreline or a road allowance you don't own, you have, you have to buy it. Um, and so for, for this tool, does it matter if one of the questions is, do you own your shore allowance? Cause that might, that might hinder or help uh, the next steps.
And that was actually, um, a member of the public brought that up. And yes, I think that that is a valuable question to, to ask because we don't want to be seen as encouraging people to develop or uh, do some sort of alteration on land which they do not own. So yes, and I have made note of that.
Great. Go ahead.
Um, I wonder if um, should large project be first? Um, and the reason I ask that is actually a question I had from, as, as Counselor Kennedy said earlier, somebody smarter than me. Um, who was suggesting that if you don't ask about the large question first, you can step off the flow chart. Uh, because your project includes creating a path to gain access to the water. But you don't, then you don't get to ask if it also includes the installation of a boat ramp, which would be, which is large. So does, is the logic, is the logic flow backwards?
So start big and go small. Okay, we can definitely look at how that would work, yeah. I think as long as people are taking the time to go through the checklist, um. Yes, yes, definitely look at it going the opposite direction, okay, yep.
Any other comments, thoughts about this, this document? Okay, uh, then we will get into the bylaw itself. Just keeping in mind the requirement for legalese. Um, but one, one question I did want to ask right off the bat was with respect to uh, accessibility. Um, it's my understanding that all caps are not good when it comes to accessibility. Um, I, I, I just wondered if there is an alternate to the way this has been set up, maybe using bold instead of all caps?
I can look into that because uh, you are correct warden and also the um, county is, you know, has to follow the provincial requirements for accessibility. I will definitely look at that.
Um, there was, there was one other uh, point about setup. Um, I, I just noticed that in, in, throughout the bylaw, there's the numbering and it's like one space away is the uh, is the beginning of the text. And I'm just wondering if it uh, um, if we can just put a little bit more of a, of a tab or space between them. Um, it just seems to, uh, they're, they're not clearly separate items. Just seems tight in, in its layout to me.
May I ask, do you mean top to bottom or do you mean two tab and then the title on the same line?
I, I, I mean top, top to bottom. Even if you, if you look at say number three interpretation and then you see, and there's no space there. But then as they go into the, the different, like from one through, it's uh, there's no, no space there at, at all. It's just that the numbers are like right up against the text. Maybe that's uh, pushing the envelope too far, but you know, in ease of reading and following a document, um, you know, I, I think that they might be valid points. But anyway, let's uh, get into the meat of the document. Um, did you want to give us any um, intro to this or, or should we just dive into questions? Go ahead.
I'll give a very brief introduction that uh, the comments and direction provided by county council at the last two uh, discussions on this topic have been made and um, there's been a number of deletions. So uh, I think that it, I'm fairly confident it reflects the direction provided. What it does not include is some of the things that we've been talking about today. So uh, example, the, the change between tons to volume or area or um, the conversation about uh, requiring additional revegetation. Should work be done? Those items are not in there. And uh, again, following public consultation, there may be additional changes. So my intent would be to bring back a document after public consultation. Again, another red line from this version, not from the original draft uh, for your review and consideration and comment.
Um, I did have under definitions, a question about agricultural lands. Um, did we land on, on, on an agreement of, that it would only say raising of livestock?
I do not remember a conversation about that.
I seem to recall some discussion about the, the definition of agricultural lands. And, and I, accepting that uh, that livestock are the thing that would have the greatest amount of impact. But, but there are other uses of agricultural lands um, other than livestock. So I'm just kind of wondering about that particular definition. That's the only one I had an issue with.
Okay, and for agricultural lands, um, may be different than agricultural uses, which can occur in different locations. Uh, this definition um, is not what you would typically see as part of Planning Act uh, definitions of agricultural lands or agricultural uses. Uh, so are you thinking or suggesting investigation into crop because of the things that are applied to crops? Is that what you're, yeah?
I just wondered if it should go beyond um, raising of livestock. Uh, because there are lots of people who've got agricultural land that aren't raising livestock, but there may be some issues associated with it. But that's, uh, I, I would look to you for clarification on that or any other comments that anybody might have. Counselor Moffett.
Excuse me, um, sorry, no, I'm sorry, I was going to give an example, but it's too long. Uh, but I agree with you, just to make sure that we're, we've got everything covered.
Okay, uh, Counselor Rayal.
Uh, just probably a silly thing, it's in the end, whereas is um, on, on one of them, we list a whole bunch of reasons why uh, this thing is desirable and, and really good. Uh, but the second bullet says no further loss of natural uh, shorelines within the county. And one second from the bottom, preventing topographical changes. I, I, I was wondering, could we put an adjective in there that, that specifies it more clearly to what I'm thinking? Is that is unauthorized or not good for the environment stuff? Because to turn around and say, we're not going to lose any more natural shorelines uh, is for, for any reason. I don't think it's the intent of the law. I think the intent is, we're not going to throw away any more natural shorelines. As opposed to properly dealing with it. And at the bottom, same idea, it's just same thing. It's just, it's not that we're saying you can't have a topographical change, you just have to have a damn good reason for it. So is there an adjective, a simple adjective that can put in there that would, would make that clearer?
Well, I would say that this is a section, um, which is just outlining the intent and the objective of county council for moving forward with this. It's not saying, no, there will be no further loss. It's saying it's the intent to stop further loss from occurring uh, by utilizing this bylaw. And it is the intent or the desire of county council to work towards preventing topographical changes in the shoreline areas. It's not saying you can't do it, it's saying it's the objective of county council to work towards these um, goals. So it's the objective to have a minimum, you know, seventy-five percent of natural and native vegetative overall cover. Um, that's a goal, so ten years down the road, when we look back at this bylaw, um, county council can say, did we meet these objectives or these goals? That would, that would be my response.
Very good, but at the end of the day, I, I, I just, I, I kind of disagree with why I'm doing this because I, I, I don't want to see any more damage done that's, that's not necessary. But people are people, uh, there is a necessity to do certain things or for health and safety for, which what we discussed. And I'm wondering, just simply putting some kind of a qualifying adjective in there would make it more clear that we're not out to, to, to try to restore it in the way it was in, just for the purpose of it. And to make sure at the end of the day that nothing is being done to, to hurt unnecessarily. As soon as we allow power lines to do, be put in and all these kinds of things, we got no control over that stuff anyway. And they're going to do whatever they want. So I'm just saying that if you want to be cognizant of your shoreline, uh, you need to know that there is a requirement for you. If you're going to make a change, it has to be approved, authorized, whatever. That's all, as opposed to you can't do it at all. Just, I guess, just the way I'm reading it.
Does anybody else have a concern about the wording in that section? Counselor Kennedy.
I just had to ask clarification, um, Charlesy, on bullet number five, I think it is, a minimum fifty percent in high quality, natural vegetative cover. Is there an easy place to find the, a, a definitive uh, answer to that one or resource? Just trying to find out the difference between the seventy-five percent natural and what, what is it contained in the fifty percent high quality? I struggled trying to find that, I'm sorry, I was just doing a Google search, so.
That's okay, and I'm talking with my mute on, sorry. Uh, yes, there is, and you know what? I will include that in the resources, not only to county council, but uh, when we do this public consultation. Because there is a few differences in the difference between just being natural and being high quality and productive habitat. So yes.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Moffett.
Um, again, just seeking clarification for, um, in that same section of, of bullets for the achievements. Um, what's the, um, ultimately, how are we going to know if we've made a difference? Um, is there any plan to like assess properties on the whole every X number of years? So we, we can say you want to achieve, you know, the, these numbers and, and get to a certain place. How are we going to monitor the getting there and how are we going to know if we got there? How are we going to monitor the getting there? And how are we going to know if we got there?
And now I'm muting myself to speak, sorry. So my thoughts are that there have been in the past, a number of programs which have on specific areas done evaluation, but you're right, this would be on a larger scale for the whole of the county. And we have been lucky enough to be partnered with other municipalities in the area and the production of certain geographical information, including our SCOOP. And we have that information going back to two thousand and thirteen. And so with the technology today, there is an ability to see where you were in two thousand and thirteen along that shoreline area, where we were in two thousand and I believe nineteen is the last, or eighteen is the last year. And then going forward, hopefully we will continue in that program and have information five years out from there as well. So we can see either the progress or the lack of progress. And we would be able to even look at it on a, we could go Algonquin Highlands only, or you know, Halls Lake only, and have that sort of information that that is the, the way in which technology will be able to assist us. And we have that information, the base information now, and we would work towards that in the future.
I forgot about SCOOP, but thank you. That little toggle. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor DeBoland?
And, and I understand and appreciate the explanation that you've given, Charlesy, but I would say the reason for, for protecting this area and that we have technology and metrics that we can measure that. The final goal is water quality. And do I think that hand in glove after this as a wherever, wherever we go with this, that in terms of whether by ourselves or other, we do some water analysis, like in the end, that's, that's, that's the real outcome that we're looking for, that, that what we're doing there is just a, a way to achieve that goal. So I think it would be helpful after this has evolved as our report back to council and to the public mechanism that if we had some water testing in some areas so that we could benchmark that along the way and, and whether there'd be a certain amount a year or they move around. I know that there's some other groups within our region that have done some of that, whatever, to collaborate with them, or whether we do it exclusively, but I would like to see the water testing as well as the analysis of the, of the shoreline to go hand in hand with that.
Yes, there are a number of agencies that currently do do water testing and evaluation in our, within the county of Halliburton, our lake systems. Some of that is provided to the county and you know, maybe that is something that comes out of, you know, once we get to that one year point of the bylaw being in place, we look at the metrics and how are we going to measure so that it is consistent in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-nine going forward? And I think that's a valuable, a valuable process we should be going through again, once it's in place, maybe after a year.
Counselor Roberts?
Thank you. And it back to water testing a lot, it's mostly on the bigger lakes, mind you, but they do have lake stewards and that is their job and they do water testing. So they're already kind of doing that on, on some of the bigger lakes and maybe working with some of those lake associations and seeing, you know, getting comments and feedback from them after this bylaw has been in place for a year or two or three or something like that to, to see what their take is on it, not just with lake quality, but you know, just in general.
Okay. So are there any other comments or questions about the intro and definitions, let's see? Counselor Rayal?
This is a suggestion. We have under the term, under the definition grade, we've got existing and we got finished. I'm wondering if it proposed in there as well, because there's a separate listing for proposed. And all three grades would be in the same place.
Hey, that has been noted. Thank you.
Any other comments on, on intro or definitions? Counselor Kennedy? You're on mute.
I guess we'll start fish habitat.
Seems to be a matter of interest for you.
Well, it, it's not just my own personal one, but there's so many things that in this bylaw hinge on fish habitat and, and what happens with it. So fish habitat, you say in the introduction that you want to maintain equality, protecting fish habitat is defined in the Fish Res Act. So fish habitat is defined to include all waters frequented by fish and any other areas upon which fish depend directly or indirectly to carry out their life processes. That's actually the definition that you're referring to in the first part. The county official plan states where such fish habitat is identified or where no data is available, an environmental EIS, what's that, environmental information, sorry.
Environmental impact study.
Statement should be completed, but that also identifies appropriate measures to be undertaken to ensure that there be no negative impacts. So my, my thought to this is that this is why this is such a big piece of this. That if you do not have identified fish habitat in front of your lake, in front of your lot, then first thing you're going to do is refer back to the official plan. You may need an environmental impact study. And no?
No.
Okay, that's, that's great then. But to me, just when I look at the official plan standing by itself, that's what it says.
You're right. But there are two separate processes under two separate pieces of legislation and the official plan only comes into play at times where development is requiring an application under the planning act. These processes are under the municipal act for site alteration. And so not necessarily are you going to require a planning act application to change your use or make the alterations under this bylaw. So the planning act only comes into play at specific times defined in that legislation. This is outside of that. So no. If you're working on the shoreline, you do, we're not saying every single person needs to go out and do an EIS to evaluate their property. That, that's not what this is saying.
Thank you.
That, that clarify it for you, Pam?
Yeah, it does. That, that helps. I mean, I'm still totally confused between planning and municipal, but and I'll probably get caught up on that as we go through it. And Charlie, just say, say as I said in an hour ago.
You know what? It's great that you're asking these questions because as many people know, planning under the planning act is, it's a whole separate process and it's, it, it takes a lot of understanding to, to go through all the policies and when they apply and when they don't. This is kind of the partner, this bylaw, proposed bylaw is the partner to the planning act. So when applications are made under the planning act, that's why you actually see there's a section in here that exempts plans of subdivision and condominiums under the planning act because that protection's already in place under the planning act. So we don't want to repeat it here. This is for everything that's not under the planning act. So no, it's a great question, Counselor Kennedy, and, and I'm glad that you're asking them.
That actually, that last sentence you just said about the, the plan of condominium, that, that cleared it up actually quite a bit for me. Thank you.
Good.
Counselor Roberts?
Thanks. I just want to correct something I just said a few minutes ago, which was about lake stewards testing water and you know, something about in two or three years. We have to remember that there's a lot of other factors happening in here and the changes that we're making today in for bylaw that's going to be implemented in twenty twenty-one. It may take a long time, much more than two or three years. And there's other factors that we can control, like we could have a summer with thirty days of thirty degree plus weather and that affects things. So it, you know, I think that even it's, this is a hard thing to measure. So we have to go back to the science and the purpose of why we're doing this bylaw and not be disappointed if we put a bylaw in place and then, and then still perhaps see some algae blooms or still see some negative water quality tests, because this isn't going to just like, I think, Counselor Moffett, you said about steering the Queen Mary. This is a, this is a big ship. So I just wanted to correct something. I said that didn't make any sense.
Thank you. Okay. Any more questions on definitions and intro? Counselor Kennedy?
High watermark. I know we've, we've covered a lot of it. I'm just trying to read through all the questions I had on that and then get rid of them. There is one though. Is there a definitive high watermark for every lake in the county at this time? Do you know? There is. Okay. So that's easily accessible through whatever means, but okay, thank you.
And that goes back actually, if I may, to the question that I asked to Trent Severn Waterway because with the change recently to a number of our structures that control, I wanted to ask the question, is that going to change some of these measures? So as I said before, and I will bring that answer back to county council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Definitions. I'm going to do a going once, going twice, and into the body of the bylaw. Questions? Counselor Moffett?
I'm not sure if you were intended to go section by section. I have something in part two, section four, under site alteration. Has anybody got anything ahead of that?
No.
Under, so four C, it talks about the designated, the kinds of designated areas and that, that are on, that, that we know of and that are on our, in our databases. And I hearken back to what you were talking about earlier today, but it's, it's sort of drifted because this is, this is a bit of a busy brain conversation. Could it be, what, what's your, tell me again what your, what the plan is to update and make more accessible the, the information that people are going to need? And my follow-up to that is in terms of again, ease of use for the public, is it possible to have a shoreline bylaw layer? So if the only reason you're in the GIS is because you need to check if, check all those things off that you could just click on shoreline bylaw and it would be a combination of the layers that people need to look at? Is that doable, reasonable, achievable?
So to answer the question, yes, we are looking, the first question is, yes, we are taking the county and the local municipal official plans so that they will be a layer. So you can click on Dye's Art and you can see their layers and Algonquin Highlands, and you can see their layers. We want that to be outward facing and accessible to all. I had not thought of the shoreline as a layer. And what I would have to do is look back at the source of the information, because what it would entail is tying multiple layers together into creation of one. I don't think it's impossible, but before I say for sure we can do it, let me look into it because I think that's a great idea.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Next question? Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, back to fish again. Section F on page eleven, I believe it is.
What number is that?
It would be four, four F, site alteration, four F. No person should carry out any site alteration adjacent to or within thirty meters of wetlands unless a permit has been issued. So if there's a spawning bed on that shoreline, then they would need a permit then to do any cutting or pruning of anything to, to get to the shoreline. Is that my interpretation?
So hopefully if they clicked on their new fabulous shoreline layer in the county GIS, we, we would encourage them to, there's likely a location on the same shoreline where it would be best or where there would be the least amount of impact. There's ways in which to do development so that there's no negative impact and that's really the test. Again, we're not doing in-water work. That's not within our jurisdiction. We're on the, on the upland. So site by site, based on the information available at the time, but we would work with people to make sure that they would be able to enjoy their shoreline.
It, it just looks like almost everything is going to need a permit to me at this point. Especially when I look at your county map. It shows in one lake there, the, the whole shoreline is in purple indicating that it's a bath spawning area. So to me, when, if I were to look at that one, then I would have to get a permit for anything I wanted to do. So anyways, that's.
And again, getting a permit doesn't mean you can't do development, right? And so it may be the minor versus the large. Right?
Next question? Counselor Moffett?
On mute? Just to the same, that, that same question I had it circled as well, because I had mentioned it earlier. It just kind of feels like, you know, you can, you can do something under this section or something under this section, but when you read them together, it means you can't do anything anywhere. So I'm kind of on the same page as Counselor Kennedy. Would it be safe to say that under this item E, that the key is site alteration? So site alteration is a thing unto itself. It's not, it's not stairs, it's not a fire pit. It's site alteration when you're pushing dirt around. Is that the clarification there?
Yes, that, that's part of it. Yes. Again, it, it goes back to that no negative impact and you can do things within your shoreline that aren't going to be harmful and negative. And that's why we don't even require under the proposed bylaw permit for those items. You're right. Then when you step into that, what is site alteration and what does that look like? That's where, yes, especially adjacent to fish habitat or adjacent to a provincially significant wetland, that that further analysis needs to be made before the work is done.
Further questions or clarification in this area? Counselor Moffett?
Yeah, I guess I, I maybe I'm beating the horse here, but I, I just want to make sure that it's, it's so clearly laid out and explained that it, it, that it doesn't end up being a back-ended trap. An unintended, unintentional back-ended trap that well, you could have done this or you could have done that, but you, but you can't do any of these things when these two pieces are tied together. That's all. I just want to make sure that it's fully understood that it's not a back-ended trap.
And so I am just, for all of county council, I am making notes to see if I can go back and take a look at that language. Because I do, I understand what you're saying and I, I've done it twice already, but I want to, I will do it a third time for sure.
You got to get it right. Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, and just, and that was, thanks, Counselor Moffett, because what I would, would like to have seen is an actual definition of site alteration. You have a definition of site in there. So if I were to take what, what I'm interpreting site alteration means, but you can't disturb anything containing natural or native vegetation and/or alteration would occur. So that goes to, to trees being injured, which is pruning and that kind of thing. So I think just a clarification on the site alteration is, is a major thing. It's not, not the minor things that we're talking about here.
That's a good point. So we can include a definition for that?
Yeah, thank you.
Carrying on, next question? Counselor Moffett? And then it looks like Counselor Kennedy?
I'm all the way down on page sixteen. Is, how do you before that?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, we'll go to Counselor Kennedy.
I just had a comment more than anything is we're allowing you to make a pass.
Sorry, what, what number are you on?
I'm on page thirteen, so that would be part three exemptions. Oh. So it, it deals with a couple of them here. So it says that we can do a five meter walkway to the, to the lake. And without, no trees are destroyed or injured. So injured includes putting soil compaction over top or root, root damage. And yet we're only going to allow a driveway. And I realize it's just within the thirty meter setback area. And I have to keep reminding myself, it's not the driveway to the cottage. It's only where it impacts. But we're only still, we're only going to allow two and a half meters from the center line. And then not to be able to injure trees. When you put driveway in, the automatic thing is you put gravel on it. So you actually are going to impact or injure trees that by soil compaction, if by nothing else. So just if, if there's a possibility to take another look at that to make that a little bit wider, or the travel portion is only not to exceed two and a half meters, but, but the driveway with itself can't exceed five meters from the center line. And, and it just seems pretty restrictive to me. An open, open problem.
So this is actually the exact wording from our existing bylaw. And the two And the two work hand in hand, so you would be able to remove those trees to build your driveway slash pathway, as long as you're following these requirements. I think it was, or the way that we apply it, is that, that 2.5 and 2.5 make the five meter wide, so the two are equal in size. So one isn't going, you can't have one beside the other to make 10 wide, if that's what your concern was, which would then impact those trees on either side. But to date, or at least since I have been with the county of Halliburton, we have not had an issue with people not being able to do this.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Carrying on, next question. Counselor Mothet, then Counselor Kennedy?
Well, okay, I'm, I'm on page 16.
I'm, I'm before that, sorry. Does a landowner, section W, the pruning of trees in accordance with good arboricultural practice? Do you need, and I think you already addressed this one, so forgive me. Does a landowner need to engage in arborist to adhere to this requirement for exemption? I don't know what a good arbor, arbor cultural practices are.
So that, oh, W, sorry, I was looking at, yeah, sorry. So again, that is currently in our bylaw, and yes, so tree marking, there's a specific skill set required to do that, as well as the proper pruning of the trees. And so, yes, we would be encouraging property owners to make sure they're using qualified professional, A, so that they're following good arboricultural practice, but B, for their own safety, so we don't have property owners trying to fell or limb trees on their own. That's a safety issue as well. So again, this has been in place, and so far, I know there's a number of companies within the county who do provide this service.
Counselor Mothet?
You can still know how to adequately and appropriately use a chainsaw and fell a tree, but still not know exactly how to prune or limb. So is there an opportunity then to have some basic guidelines on what that means in, as part of our education? That, so there's a difference between somebody who's, who, who has to come and take down a danger tree, because they're certified and qualified to do that, and the homeowner probably isn't, and being able to limb your own trees with your own chainsaw, and knowing that you leave, you know, a little bit of the limb. So there's the scope, the scope of that phrase, of that good practice, is, is broad enough. Some of it is more than, people can more than easily take care of some of it, and other things need a professional. So we want to make sure that we're not saying, oh, you can't do anything, you need to hire somebody, because people don't, lots of people don't need to hire somebody, they just need to know what to do.
So this is just my professional advice to county council, that we do not train people in the practice of proper forestry, arboriculture, any of these techniques. And we should be encouraging people to hire qualified professionals for such services. We understand that people are going to be people and, and do what they will, but I think we should be encouraging them for many reasons, not just the health of the trees, but also their own safety to be using those qualified professionals.
Comment or thoughts on that? Counselor Mothet?
Well, it makes sense, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. Okay, next question. Counselor Kennedy?
Moving on to the next one, X. You, you reference identified fish habitat again. I'm just wondering if, because we keep coming back to that, do we need to better define for the average person, identified fish habitat? Because that impacts on whether you're going to need a site plan or not. I wonder, there are references, you made one reference to the word, a critical fish habitat in one of your Q and As. If, develop that a little bit further, that we say, recommend the use of critical type one and type two fish habitat, rather than generic identified fish habitat, as a term to trigger the site plan requirement. So that when I look up and I go, okay, I've got spawning beds or whatever on my property, so this area is, is critical, I can't do anything there without a site plan agreement, but this area is, is clear, I should be able to go ahead on this area without having to do that and trigger the bigger project. Am I getting too far down the weeds on this?
So I'm, I'm just going to clarify that nothing under this bylaw is proposed to require people to have a site plan agreement, because those would be through the Planning Act. So what, I, I, I understand what you're saying. And so, yes, I have made a note to have that clarification between what is adjacent to fish habitat? What is the, the fish habitat? Use the same term throughout, because there is a difference between critical fish habitat and fish habitat. But again, understanding that all of that is in the water, and we're dealing on the land. So clearly, I need to make sure that that is clear. That's what I'm taking from this, no. And it's a great question, again.
Okay, next, next question. Counselor Kennedy?
One to, to A, on the same page. Better definition of what minor land, what you mean by minor landscaping? I was, you know, you could use things like yard activities, construction of a walkway, then I got in here about the five tons or tones as used elsewhere. Is there a better suggestion here, when, rather than just using the word minor? And maybe I give some examples, or? You may have already covered some of these, and I, I forgive me, because I'm just going through my red ink here.
Sure, so in the question and answer to county council, I believe I've addressed that. So go back and take a look, and if you have any further questions on it, if it's not clear, by all means, send me a note, and happy to have that discussion.
Thank you for your patience.
Absolutely.
Hey, that's, we need to get it clear, and that, that's why we're here today, so don't be shy, Pat. Counselor Rial?
I think, I, I think it's part of the definition, but I'm gonna get clarity anyway. Section H, page, page 14, just below where we were, section H. We're mentioning items there, and I, and I think the key there is that they are covered by a building permit. Is that what I'm reading? Because things that are not in there, like would be driveways and park, they, they all could have fill, they could all let things change, but they more than likely would not have a building permit. So is H tied to specific issues that have building permits?
Correctly.
Other permits.
Yep, so the provisions that are outlined under section two, specifically H, would be where there is a permit issued by the chief building official under the Ontario Building Code. So any of the alterations or site, removal of dirt, removal of trees, removal of vegetation, would be exempt because they have this building permit. And this would specifically apply to those properties that are undersized, that cannot make that 30-meter setback. So this allows them to have that building capacity, and not have to necessarily come in for that permit. Understanding it is the intent of the bylaw, that if you're encroaching into that 30 meters, two meters, that then makes up part of the 25% that you're allowed to have as part of your development area.
Yeah, you, you can't have your cake and eat it too.
I'd like to, but yeah, you're right.
So, so there is another section referring to pathways and driveways. Just give me a quick reference as to where that might be.
Oh goodness, yes, there is another section, and it specifically is talking about, and it's not just driveways, or pathways down to, to the shoreline, but it does allow you, can you give me a second? Five, three. So if you're within that 30-meter setback, and what you're doing is no greater than the 25%, that's the relief automatically applied.
So, so you really would need to, to, if you're going to do any kind of really alteration, like put gravel in, you'd need a permit. A permit related to this bylaw.
So the way the bylaw is written now, if you're within that, if the driveway is going to encroach on that 30 meters, and it's less than five meters wide, no, you would not need a permit. What may, and again, this will be based on the public consultation piece, is depending on the volume or area of material, we may push it right.
Super, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next question. I think we're into section five now. Counselor Mothet?
I have to ask Counselor Kennedy if I can go to page 16 yet.
Yeah, actually, you can.
Okay, thank you. My question is on page 16, 6A3, about the insurance. So I would like Charlesy to just clarify a little bit more of that. Is that, is that insurance by the contractor or the homeowner, or does it matter?
I would strongly recommend that homeowners or property owners have insurance for their property, but this is specifically speaking to the person who is doing work.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next question. I'm into section seven, is there anything else before section seven? Counselor Rial?
Just, I think it's a minor glitch on 16E, the first item, for which the existing permit, as opposed to the, to the existing permit, or am I wrong? The word "to" should be "the." If you go down to E, one very last word in that sentence. It's conditions for which, to existing, or should it be for which the existing?
I will have to take a look, because I'm not seeing, I'm on page 16, number seven. Subparagraph E.
E and I.
Very last word in that line, for which, I think the word should be "the."
Noted, correct.
I, I just wanted to, in, in section sevenB, it talks about additional fees. I'm just kind of wondering about the whole fee structure there, when you're, when there actually is no fee in the first place, and you're saying that there's additional fees? It's a little bit confusing, but you know, I, I understand that this is no fees right now, but we haven't decided whether there will be fees in the future.
Correct, so my understanding of the way that this would work is, if a fee were to be put in place, then obviously county council, based on, again, I'm hoping at least a year's worth of this process, we would understand, is it a flat fee? Is it a scaled fee? Are there certain additional charges if we need to, I don't know, have something reviewed by an engineer, or something like that? Those would all hopefully be fleshed out in that first trial year to see where and what those expenses are, and what they're for. So this is kind of a placeholder for moving forward.
Okay, you had a question, Counselor Rial?
Just, just a quick comment, under the permit for site alteration, application fee is zero, permit fee is zero, and then extension fee is 50% of the original. Could we, for now, just put zero there as well? Because it'll be 50% of the original permit, which right now will be zero.
So I understand your recommendation. However, this is the document that is going out for public consultations, so it would be my recommendation, it stays as 50% of the original permit fee, so that members of the public could say, yes, that's a great idea. If I have to pay $100, 50% is reasonable. Or no, that's not reasonable because of X, Y, and Z, is, is why I had it in there. When we take forward any future fee, then that would be reflected as a 50% of the price, and then that price would be put in there as a dollar amount.
Thank you, excellent explanation, excellent.
I'm under that same section C, I was kind of wondering about the 90-day period, but we did, we did address that, talk about that earlier, so I, I guess I would be okay with that. I'm wondering about E. Given some of the challenges associated with change of, of, of ownership of properties, if 30 days is sufficient time when, when there's a property transaction taking place?
So I would think.
You're on mute, Andrea, sorry.
Sorry.
I, no, I'm just talking to myself, I didn't know where that, where that, you said E, and I couldn't find.
Oh, sorry, it's page 16, seven.
Okay, I was already down, thank you.
Sorry, so 30 days is, again, just a standard timeline, that's what's in other municipal site alteration bylaws. And so we're talking about 30 days from the transfer of the ownership. I think that's reasonable. Hopefully, if I am selling my property to Counselor Kennedy, I would have told him, or he may have seen that I have something ongoing in the shoreline area. So hopefully, those conversations have taken place ahead of time. And I'm not thinking the transfer would be difficult on the county's end. Once we see the new ownership, that should be able to easily be transferred.
Okay. Okay, next question. Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, I'm all the way down to section nineE.
Anything before then?
Yeah, I don't have anything before then.
Did you have something before then, Cease?
Yeah, just, I'm, just, I'm not grabbing the words, I'm sure everything is there, is in, on page 18, five. An officer. And I'm not understanding what I'm reading, which is probably just me. So they're prevented from going in. So what exactly is happening here? Are they just allowed to go in, or how, how do they get this, what am, what am I being told here?
You're on mute, Charlesy.
My apologies. So the off, you're saying the officer is prevented?
I'm reading five, it says, any officer may pursue it to order whatever.
So it's saying the officer may.
Has been prevented, or is likely to be prevented. Unless otherwise notice the condition, does that mean they just go on the property? Or do I have to get the police, or what do they have to do?
Oh, I see what you're, okay. So. So in some circumstances, what can happen is, and this is not going to happen in the county of Halliburton, but it could. Officers who are looking to enforce bylaws may be prevented from entering a property, even though they're permitted to through the powers on here. And so what this is saying is that there are alternative means for ensuring that an inspection is completed. What I can say, based on our current bylaw, is almost every property owner allows our bylaw officer on site to do the proper inspection and investigation. And it's very, very rare that we are required to have additional means to undertake enforcement. This provides us that additional.
Which could be the police if necessary.
Could be.
Counselor DeVallon?
In trying not to get too hard into the weeds here, Bill, are inspectors that may not be provincial offenses officers? Is that's kind of what is this is leading into? Because like some, some of our building officials or bylaw, whatever, are provincial offenses officers, and some are not. Is this just clarifying that those that are duly executed can take this measure? uh, can take this measure of free court?
So that's what this says, and uh, when we speak and have that conversation about staffing, my recommendation would be that they are provincial offenses officer. The current um, staff or contract person is, and that really is um, a good designation to have. However, we know that not all municipal bylaw enforcement officers are provincial offenses officers. So yes.
Is that clear for everyone? Okay, um, additional questions? Are there further questions? Council Rayal?
I'm on page nineteen, uh, line at the top. Um, it says here, uh, services or registered mail. Uh, and then uh, to have been taken, and I'm, I'm wondering, are we going to validate that with, uh, with Canada Post? And, and the game below, we just put the, the notice on their, um, on their board, and then at the end of five days, well, let's, if you weren't there, then that's your problem. Or how do we, how are we going to make sure at the end of the day that we're, if a seasonal person gets uh, a notice? And they're not, they've gone away for a month, but they haven't chosen to be negligent. They just weren't there. And, and so consequently, um, how are we going to deal with that, or, or is there? How, yeah.
So I'm going to explain it as I understand it. This is the um, responsibility and requirement of the county to issue notice. It's not our responsibility to ensure that they receive it on the other end. Uh, so notice is effective and determined to have been given once these items have occurred. So same when we deal with a planning application and you're required to give notice. So you do what is outlined in the Oreg, you do the mailing list, you do the posting on the property. Um, again, it does happen where people are, you know, out of the country or out of the area for six months of the year. And it is our responsibility to issue the notice. Um, that's kind of where it, where it stops.
So if they cannot, or do not, cannot, if they chose not to respond, and one of their arguments is that's, they weren't here, or whatever the case may be. Do we have the authority to proceed with remedial action? Or do we go a step further and try to be more compassionate or empathetic, or whatever the right word is?
So technically, um, we would have the authority to move forward. Uh, it would be, you know, on a case by case basis if we knew that they were out of town, or you know, they had notified us. Sometimes people do. Um, then the action could be equal to the situation, but yes, this does give the county the authority to move forward. Regardless.
Concerns or questions about this? Any thoughts of additional methods of notification, or should we go down that road?
Don't do.
Yeah, well, it makes, first Charlesy, then uh, Council Moffett, then Council Rail.
So this is the, the standard, again, I, I say this a lot, out of the legislation. So these are the, the minimum requirements as outlined. Um, it's same with the amounts and like this is all taken right out of the legislation. So I'm not sure. I would have to go back to legal to see what, if anything, we could or could not change.
Council Moffett?
Uh, thank you. I, I think as with any um, provision of service in a situation like this, we have to acknowledge that there are some places where it could become a game of who's on first. So as, as Council Ryal was, was, I think suggesting is, you know, somebody's away and they didn't get the message and they didn't tell the guy, and then the bylaw person turned up, but the work's already done, like that's, this stuff happens and it'll have to be dealt with as it's dealt with.
Council Rail?
Yeah, because at the end of the day, if, if I've gone away thinking everything is really good, and I happen to be in Australia or wherever, doesn't really matter. Uh, and then I come home and somebody has completely re-altered my whole yard, and I don't know anything about it. Uh, I, I'm, I'm going to be less than happy about it, even though technically we're legal. Is that something that you'd want to happen to you, I guess is my question. So finding an alternative to that kind of thing, I think would be something we should do. Um, where, where we can pretty well know that that person is, is indisposed.
Go ahead, Charlie.
So I, I can speak to the current process under our current bylaw, and I know our staff make every effort to communicate with the property owner. Um, when we are out on site, if the property owner is aware, um, I am not, I can't think of an example where it's taken more than a week, maybe two, to contact an out of country property owner when we've been investigating it on site. And it is always under, at least on our current bylaw, it's always our, um, we, we always work to come up with a remediation and a solution. Our first step is not to find people. Our first step isn't to make that charge. Um, and that's where the stop work order comes in, because that then gives the opportunity. We're not finding you, but we're saying, stop, let's have the conversation and let's see where we can go together forward. Um, so maybe that answers somewhat of what you're looking for, Council Ryal?
First off, that's great, because you're saying stop the work, but you're not going to walk in there with bulldozers and change everything. But that's a bad term for short preservation bylaw, but so you're going to put a stop work order on it first and, and let the dust settle and figure out what that was going on.
That is our current practice, and uh, staff make every effort, like I said, to contact and communicate uh, with property owners. They're not always in the county. They're not always out of the country either, and so we do have that information to make that contact.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Uh, now I did understand that the, the schedules were something that we would leave as they stand for now until we've had our public consultation process. Is that everyone's understanding? Council Kennedy?
Yeah, I, I think that's fair. There's been a substantial number of changes and modifications and clarifications that I don't know there's much use in spending a lot of time on these schedules today until uh, Charlesy and her staff have a, a chance to go back over them. Um, at some point, is there an opportunity here to speak to things that are not in this bylaw?
Uh, yes, you think there should be something included in this bylaw? Yes, I think now is definitely the time.
I have a couple.
Okay.
Um, from the uh, one of our neighbors, they've actually, and it's in their official plan, I have a feeling you're going to say it's the Planning Act, not Municipal Act, but I could say it anyways.
Need to know.
Uh, they make provisions for um, uh, shoreline finances for resort commercials and institutional accommodation, and also for fronting for marinas. So when the, is that where we're going to cross the line over if, if uh, for example, I wanted to build a new marina on Housen? Um, do I have to follow the twenty-five percent guideline, or was that a, is that going to be Planning Act condominium development that uh, supersedes this bylaw?
I would hope that that would be a Planning Act development and that the all encompass, so there would be the environmental impact statement, especially if you're starting from scratch on a, you know, a vacant or maybe a property that's currently used as seasonal residential, and you're turning it commercial. Absolutely, that's a change of use. So right off the bat, it's at minimum a zoning, may also require site al-, site plan control uh, as well as an official plan amendment depending on the municipality you're in. So Planning Act, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other one was going back to my, um, another neighbor here has actually used the definitions of type one critical habitat, type two important and unknown habitat, just to help clarify their shoreline uh, work. But they, the, to, to go on, just, I think just to make it a little easier for people to understand. I think that's it for me.
Any other comments at this time about the bylaw itself? Okay, I just wondered if, I'm, I'm sorry, Council Rail?
Yeah, under uh, section nine, the penalties, um, I'm just wondering, um, in, in two, we have first offense up to a maximum, up to a maximum. Is, does one of the schedules give us more information as to the breakdown? Cause I can't see you having five thousand dollars for, for every offense, uh, but there could be gradual numbers. And secondly, just as, as a follow up to that, um, I noticed that the corporations have a larger fines field than the others. So just wanted to know what logic was there, and, and if we're going to be able to get more information on the finding itself.
Though, as you may remember, and I can't remember, I'm sorry, if it was this council or previous county council. Uh, while the fines are up to a maximum of, the county needs to apply to the government um, through a very lengthy process to set the fines and the fees and everything that goes along with this process. So while these are the up to maximums, it doesn't mean the fine that the county gets assigned from the government is going to be that. So in our shoreline, it has the same, our, our current shoreline tree preservation bylaw, it has the same amounts in the bylaw. But when we applied to the province, they came back and said eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. So it's not something um, that county council gets to set as an amount. We apply and based on the contents and, I guess, perceived detriment, um, an amount is assigned to us.
Would that, would that be a maximum of eight hundred dollars?
Well, right now, under our current bylaw, it's eight hundred and twenty-five plus uh, victim surcharge, which I believe is a hundred and fifty dollars. So the total fine right now is, um, it's less than a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I've got to say to me that that, that is absolutely ridiculous, given the amount of damage that can be done. I, I'm wondering if, if there's any way for us to make any compelling argument about uh, stiffer fines. I see hands. Uh, go ahead, Charlesy, and then, and then we'll go to uh, um, Counselors Ra-, uh, Robertson, Devolun.
I, I think every time we make the application to the province to set these fines, we should be making that argument, and we did last time. Uh, and it never hurts to make the same argument again. And in this case, um, if this proposed draft bylaw, um, in some form comes forward to be a bylaw that's in effect, this is more encompassing than what we currently have. So maybe that also adds to the argument for a greater um, impact. Should this bylaw not be followed, therefore a greater fine. Um, however, yeah, we, we don't set that fine.
Council Roberts?
So, yeah, we had this conversation, I think it was previous council about the low fines, but then they still are responsible for the restoration. So if, for instance, with our current tree bylaw, they cut down a twenty foot tree, they basically have to be planting uh, a lot. So there's the fine, and then there's the revitalization, restitution, whatever you want to call it. And then, and so it's not just that they're getting off with that fine. And in this case, I imagine that if there was some, you know, they'd have to what, whatever it's called, you know, uh, do work as well as the fine.
Yes, so similar to our current bylaw, uh, the fine would be put in place, and then there's restoration. So right now, what we try to do is make sure that the restoration not only occurs, but that it's maintained until it is again covered by the bylaw. Uh, so just as an example, easy for people to visualize, if a tree is cut down and it's replaced by three smaller similar trees, those trees cannot be harmed until they are again covered by our bylaw, having that five centimeter diameter. So you can't just plant them and then mow them over the next year. We go back and we make sure that they're, they're still there and they're growing and they're healthy.
Would be a little counterproductive. Council Devolun?
Yes, it, it, uh, I think not only do we make the proposal like we did the last time, uh, for the scope of the, the fines to be increased, but I think that this is uh, should serve as a foundation for a delegation uh, at Roma or Aimo uh, to the appropriate, uh, maybe even uh, multi ministers, whatever, because uh, given the, the nature and scope, what we're trying to do, the Ministry of Environment, Ministry of Natural Resources, a bunch of others, whatever. Uh, I, and, and the Minister of Municipal Affairs, I think that we should take this forward. I'm not presuming that they're likely to give us a fine anywhere in the neighborhood that we probably would like it.
Um, yeah, I think that's an excellent idea, and I would ask that you uh, bring that up at our meeting on Wednesday, uh, because that's on the agenda for discussion. That, that's a good plan. Uh, Council Ryal?
So if I'm reading this right, it's really not a fine. What we're really doing is we're suing these people. And, and at the end of the day, the courts will make a decision on what we get. Really, I mean, if that's what it sounds like, but the fine isn't really a fine as you would get a speeding ticket. It's, it's whatever the court makes a decision on. So we're suing them.
And I don't think that's exactly correct, but will, uh, Charlesy, go ahead.
So I'm not a lawyer, and what I'm about to say isn't legal advice. My understanding is that's it. Should an occurrence happen and our bylaw officer provides you a ticket? Okay, that's that amount that is identified to us by the province. If you then challenge that ticket and we end up in court, through that process, you could be issued a greater amount or a lesser amount based on the determination of the courts. So I, I wouldn't, I don't believe the term suing is correct. I believe it is, it is a fine.
Uh, Council Kennedy, did you have a comment? Okay. Um, okay, so anything else on the bylaw itself? Um, I, I wanted us to have a, a brief conversation and understanding on the, on the communications plan and, and the public meeting. Did you did you want to talk about that at all, Charlesy?
I, I sure can. Uh, so a, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, what I'm uh, hoping to receive as direction from county council is to move forward with public consultation and communication as well as to set up um, some type of virtual meeting where the public can participate and speak to you, their counselors, their representatives. Uh, so for the public consultation, it was thought, and again, I'm working with uh, a firm to help and assist with this. Um, using Bang the Table, which is our county Wade Inn. There's a number of options for simple consultation, as we've discussed today, you know, is it better to use weight, volume, or area? Tell us your opinion and have a little, you know, blurb at the bottom. There's also other opportunities um, to have them look at documents or break it out by section so that um, they wouldn't necessarily be commenting on everything, maybe just the area that concerns them, and providing direct comment uh, through that means. And then for those who uh, may not use the internet for this type of purpose, that's where the public meeting. Um, the idea would be that they could um, pre-register and then participate in a public meeting whereby they provide their comments on uh, the proposed process to you, county council, and then at the end of that meeting would be a discussion on county council providing myself and staff direction on any last changes based on both the public consultation that's done online with Wade Inn and any comments made uh, during that public meeting. All of that would be brought together into that final document for um, county council to say yes or no. Uh, we would like to move forward, or no, we wouldn't. And then the next steps as outlined in my report would take off from there. A- and as was discussed earlier, I completely understand that those timelines are very ambitious. And uh, you know, I will take my direction from county council as to how you wish to move forward as we go through each step.
Okay, are there questions or concerns about what's been laid out? Council Moffett?
Um, I just want to make sure that there is, um, that we give ourselves ample time to be able to receive, review, uh, and, you know, ask for more different information from uh, any of those input opportunities. So if we have a virtual public meeting and you know, thirty people register and have their say, and there's more questions or more clarification needed, is it the intention that we would ask all that that day, or would it be like this where we have asked staff to go get more answers and, and then, then we would meet again? So I want to make sure that we don't end up saying, yeah, we're on a timeline here, so we're just gonna get going. How much time are we allowing ourselves to review any of that input? Because that's the whole point.
I would see, I mean, if, if we get enough concern or valid uh, um, valid cautions brought to us during the, the process that it would come back to us and and we would have to review it and consider it and make decisions as we go forward. I mean, whatever time it takes, um, there's going to be things that we hear and agree with. There will be things that we hear and, and and disagree with or can't do anything about for legislative reasons, so we'll ha-, we'll have to wait. So we'll have, we'll have to wade through it all. Any other questions or comments about how we proceed? I, I would, I would almost think that maybe Wednesday afternoon's meeting might be a good example of how a, a broader meeting will go. It'd be interesting. So any other questions or concerns at this point in time? I, I've got to thank everyone for their, their patience and their questions today. I, I'd also really sincerely like to thank Charlesy. I know that this is a, a big project. There's been a lot of work going into it, and, and you've done an excellent job of responding to our questions. So I, I, we need to have a mover and a seconder for the resolution that was detailed in the, the first report. Is that a question or a mover? Mover, Counselor Devolon, seconded by Counselor Roberts. If our clerk could read the resolution?
Moved by Counselor Devolon, seconded by Counselor Roberts. Be it resolved that the council for the County of Halliburton receives for information the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty staff report on the draft shoreline preservation bylaw, and that staff be directed to initiate public consultation and communication related to the draft bylaw and proposed self-assessment process, and that staff be directed to organize a virtual public meeting.
All in favor? Carried. Okay, I need a mover and a seconder for the confirming bylaw. Oh, I'm sorry, do you question, Counselor Roberts?
I do. I, I just in between the, before we adjourn and confirm and all that stuff, just, we talked about the end of January for a virtual meeting. Just in light of how difficult it has been to get other meetings together for different things, I'm wondering if the sooner, at least, you know, for the county counselors, to make sure that we're all available, the sooner a doodle pool goes out, the better, because, I mean, I doubt any of us are traveling anywhere. But I, as we know with other things, other meetings, other meetings, it's like two months later before we could all find a date. So it's just a suggestion that, Charlesy, if you can get that out as soon as possible through the warden or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. Excellent point. Thank you. Okay, so a mover and a seconder for the confirming bylaw. Counselor Burton, Counselor Shaw?
It resolved that bylaws four zero one eight, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty special meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered ready first, second, and third time, and finally passed, and the sale of the corporation be affixed?
All in favor? Carried. And a mover and a seconder for adjournment. Counselor Kennedy? Counselor Moffett? Thanks, everyone.
Take care.